Calderon Heard, the author of the bill, was, hey, you're leaving Latino film directors out. You're leaving those under the million-dollar mark because there was that ceiling there where you didn't get the tax credits if you spent less than a million. And that's where most of the independent films were being made. So did we make a mistake? Did we overlook the independent filmmakers? Or was that intentional?
No, it wasn't intentional. It was a cutoff point. They made a cutoff point. I don't quite understand what the reasoning is behind that kind of cutoff point. What they should be is for augmenting and building the industry on both two levels. One, the audience level. And the second one, on the artistic level of the kind of artists that we're getting.
It would seem like you would be caught in the middle, though. You promote films and films being made by up-and-coming directors and artists outside of California. But yet, you still want to see California films being made right here. So that the state benefits from the tax revenue. How do you reconcile both?
We have California artists in our Los Angeles Latino International Film Festival, my short division, documentary division, in our long-form division. The people, we have Los Angeles artists that are in there, too. We just cater to, quote-unquote, "the Latino experience." We want to see experiences that have to do with Latinos. And if a Latino, if I want to make a movie about, say, the Great Wall of China, I want to be able to make that movie. And I want to be able to present it as a Latino understanding of the Great Wall of China. And that's what we're doing. We're getting Latino artists all over the world, from all over the world. They come from Germany, some people are in France. Latinos, we have Latinos everywhere. And when we find a director that's making his movie, we bring it over and we just give him the aesthetic and allow him to really show us what he's doing and what the Latino experience is happening in. All it's doing is augmenting the culture and allowing people to understand us. We used to see, at one point, we're 95% Latino and 5% all others that were coming to the festival. Now we're over almost 60/40. And in speaking Spanish, I would say it's almost 50/50. 50% of people who come to speak Spanish and English, and 50% don't.
You know, one of the wonderful things is that when you see this amazing diversity of films that La Lea comes with, you see Latino actors in non-traditional or stereotypic roles. They can be the doctor, they can be the lawyer. Nobody makes a big deal out of it. We're still in America, are stuck in this idea that if you're Latino and you're in a film, you have to be a Latino. Why can't we break through that?
I think we're breaking through it. The problem is, again, it's just a matter of allowing two things to happen. One, that the structures, corporations, start to really see the money come rolling in every time they put a Latino in front of the camera and/or make a Latino film that's made by a director and all that same thing. You know, like Corron did with, you know, Harry Potter IV. He made tremendous amount of money for them in that franchise. It was one of their best movies. And people loved it. And Latinos went to see it in much larger amounts than even went to go see the other ones. And they went to see the other ones a lot. So it meant something. And it's meaning more and more. So I think that definitely the people are there, ready to go see movies.
Sure, yeah. I think your portrayal of Jaime Escalante in Stand and Deliver was really a breakthrough. Because after a little while in the movie, you forgot the fact that it was Garfield High School. You forgot the fact that he was a Latino instructor. You forgot the fact that these were Latino kids. And this amazing theme of striving to reach excellence took over. And you didn't see racial lines anymore after a little while. Of course, until the end of the movie, when the issue came up about, you know, the cheating thing. But that was amazing. I thought you had really turned it then. Were you really happy with how that turned out?
Oh, yeah, very much so. I think it's, well, it's been hailed as the most viewed film in the history of film in the United States of America. It'd be Gone with the Wind around 12 years ago, as far as amount of people that have seen it.
Yeah.
Beats Avatar, beats all, they can't touch it. E.T. and Star Trek, Star Wars. All these different films cannot get close to the amount of people that have seen, you know, Stand and Deliver. The reason is because teachers use it like you would use anything to motivate your students. And so every, a student will at least see it twice before he gets out of high school.
Right. And then there was Selena, where we were really talking in the bottom line of the unpredictability of fame and what it can bring you. After a little while, you forgot that Selena was from Mexico. You forgot it was a Latino theme. You're able, and I don't know how you do this, but you're able to extract the real meaning of the movie without, you know, hitting us over the head with the ethnic thing.
Well, I think that culturally, it's not bad to understand what the culture is. And at the same time, you don't have to push it into anybody's face. It's just a matter of, when I'm in the movie, if I have a surname that's Latino, then I'm a Latino. I just finished doing The Green Hornet, in which I was Axford, Michael Axford. And that's about as un-Latino as you can get.
Yeah.
And nobody called it or said anything about it. It was just a matter of that was what I was playing.
Eddie, when did you know that you were going to do what you were going to do? Because I know you started off back in the '60s in a rock and roll band. And they came to you and they said, I'm sorry, Edward, you just can't sing.
Well, I still can't sing. And I never could sing. But neither could Bob Dylan. He could sure write, though, you know? And there's a lot of artists that really are not singers, but they sing. They sing their stories. I was a storyteller from the beginning. And basically, yeah, I started off as a singer and then went into doing theater at East L.A. Community College. And then went on to encompass singing, dancing, and movement, and theater, all into one. And that's when I got into doing that. And then zutsu was the outcome of it.
Right, fabulous, absolutely. Startling, that character. People have written about you and they have said that you wear your chicanismo right on your shirt sleeve. And you're proud of it. You want to put it out there for everybody who wants to see and partake. Does that pretty much sum you up?
Yeah, it does. I mean, that's what I am. So it kind of, you know, what's the saying? You're going to stand at your father's door. And you're going to have to be understanding of who you are, not who you should be in respects of somebody else, you know? And I think, you know, one of the sayings is, you know, they're not going to ask you why you weren't so-and-so. They're going to ask you why you weren't yourself. And so I have been myself in all the good and the bad of it. And I'm no angel, but at the same time, I've tried to do good all my life. But in essence, I think that we all have a great ability to use ourselves, all of ourselves. Because I really proclaim myself to be African, Asian, indigenous, mixed with my Caucasian-ness, and that's what makes me brown. I cannot leave out any of my grandparents. And they come in all those cultures because they were all very much that lineage is where I came from. So I don't want to ever forget my great-great-great-great-great-great-great-great-great-great-great-great-great-great-great-great-great-great-great-great-great-great-grandmother.
And recently, you've said that as you've been on ancestry.com, finding all that out. Listen, we're all the better for it, Edward James Olmos. And thank you for being you. Thank you for being here. And keep it up. You're still the beacon out there for many of us, okay?
Thank you so much.
You're watching L.A. Business Today.
Urging the U.N. Security Council to get involved in the crisis at the Fukushima Daiichi Nuclear Power Plant. Dr. Mishkati says one nation cannot handle the environmental fallout of this disaster. The USC professor studied the nuclear disaster at Chernobyl and is now talking about Japan. Professor, welcome to L.A. Business Today.
Thank you very much, Ed.
These are intense hours as we look at what's happening in Japan. I think the world is focused on nuclear power like it's never been before. Yes, Chernobyl, but now with this massive tsunami coming before the nuclear power disaster and with six reactors at first involved. Tell us what's going on, what you've heard that's going on in Japan. And why are you saying that it's more than one nation that should be involved in this?
As you said, there are six reactors. Two of them, we don't have that much problems with that. Reactor number five and six, this reactor one, three, and four, these are the problematic one. They have two problems. One with cooling down the reactors. Of course, reactor number four did not have any fuel on that. It was in shutdown. But reactor one, two, and three, they have a problem of cooling them down. And also, not only with the reactors, but also with the spent fuel pools that are there. And those spent fuel pools, they are not under the containment building. And all this massive loss of power, which we call it the station black art, has caused all the problems that we see. The meltdown, radiation released to the atmosphere, to the water also.
Seeing the radiation go into the ocean is rather alarming.
Absolutely.
How dangerous is that radiation to the sea life?
Depends on the level of radiation and how it disperses. Would it stays on the surface or it gets to the bottom also? This is very uncharted water. I think we don't have that much experience on that. There are some little research done on the former Soviet dumping nuclear reactors or used nuclear reactors of the naval bases of Vladivostok. But we don't have that much research about this particular area, about the dispersion of radiation in the water. But based on some reports that I get from my former, my mentor, and who is a former high-level official at the World Health Organization, working on Chernobyl for many years, this thing is very, quote-unquote, "serious."
Very serious.
Yes.
The isotopes, selenium-137, that stay in the atmosphere for a long time, that they've detected up to 25 miles from the plants. How serious is this to the human population? And what should scientists be looking for to protect the population around Japan?
The only reference point that we have, we can go back and look at that, is in the case of the Chernobyl accident, which is 25th anniversary is in April 26th of this year, 2011. In that particular case, the reactor exploded. And not only reactor exploded, we had a half of the reactor which was over there, it melted down. And then there was not a containment dome or a containment building. That's why radiation traveled all over. The level of radiation and the amount of radiation was much higher in that case. But the thing which happened in the case of Chernobyl, as you said, it was the cesium-137 and cesium-134, which has a very long half-life, 30 years or even more. The only way, being honest with you, that they were able to protect people, there is no other way than to evacuate people.
So that's why they're evacuating. And you encouraged Japan to bring in more, to bring in the United Nations. I saw that on your blog, saying that there are too many countries that have a vested interest in how this disaster is handled. Talk about that with us.
I have been there and I've seen that. I visited Chernobyl in 1997, which was almost nine years after the '86 accident because reactor number three out of the four reactor was still operational. I wanted to see that. And while I was driving to get to the plant through the exclusion zone, you need to have a special permission to get. And I saw that exclusion zone, then talked to the liquidators, firefighters, reactor operators. I realized that this is a much bigger event or catastrophe that one nation with its stretched resources, like in the case of Japan, can handle it. And then because what, in the case of large nuclear accident, there is a saying since 1986, "A nuclear accident anywhere is a nuclear accident everywhere." Because of the radiation fallout traveling, because of the long-lasting health effect of that. Because of all these reasons, the example of Chernobyl radiation fallout traveling all over the Europe, from Sweden to Italy to United Kingdom, and also lack of enough resources then in the Soviet Union and Ukraine. Because of all of these above reasons, I made a suggestion that we need to have an international collaboration and mobilization to handle this, unfortunately, the aftermath of this accident.
Is Japan listening?
Japan, no. I mean, my short answer is no. There is national pride is that there. And also, there is, there is no system to do this. This is the problem. We cannot do this on an ad hoc basis. I gave a testimony back in 1993, 1993, which was seven years after Chernobyl, before the U.N., it was called U.S. Commission to Improve the Effectiveness of United Nations. This commission was appointed by the first President Bush. I gave a testimony then, based on the lessons of Chernobyl, said, "We need to beef up. We need to change the mandate of the International Atomic Energy Agency in Vienna, IAEA, to make it capable and equipped to respond to an international nuclear crisis." Unfortunately, we didn't do that, and we have the mess that we have now.
That's really startling.
It is tragic.
It's tragic. Because what you're talking about, 14, 15 years?
And I have the copy of my testimony and the videotape of my testimony. I mean, I'm not making that up.
And so here we are in Japan. Also, I would think in Japan, were they really prepared for a tsunami of this size? You know, I've heard nuclear experts, we talked to some people from the, they're spokespeople for the industry. They go, oh, well, they were ready for a six or seven earthquake, but not an eight or nine. Well, you know, it's Japan. And plus, anytime you can have an earthquake that's bigger than anything, and you anticipate. Was it smart to have six reactors near the coast? Where they built these?
That's an excellent question. Being honest with you, that decision was made based on economy of scale. And by the way, this is not the largest plant. Japan has another plant called Kashi Wazaki that was hit by an earthquake in July 2007. By the way, that one belongs also to the same company, TEPCO. That site has seven reactors working on it. That's considered to be the largest nuclear power stations in the world.
So Japan depends heavily on nuclear power.
30% for their electricity generation coming up from 56, 7 reactors. Of course, before the accident, four of them or six of them are out of commission.
How does California compare?
In what respect?
How much of our, how many, how much of our power comes from nuclear power plants that are here in the States?
In the United States, I know that in the United States, we have 104 nuclear power reactors. That 104 nuclear power reactors, they generate 19.8% to 20% of the electricity in the United States. They call it electricity generation share. In California, we have two nuclear power stations. One in Northern California, Diablo Canyon, one in Southern California, San Onofre. The share of these two reactors, these two stations in state electricity generation, really, I cannot tell you. And maybe nobody after the electricity deregulation. Because we get electricity now from Texas, from Turkey, pointing to Florida, from all over. But we need to look at the wattage of the two stations over there and do a simple calculation. I would say, give and take, less than 1% or so.
So it's not huge as far as generating our power. But it is huge environmentally. I mean, no longer can you live anywhere near a nuclear power plant and feel like you can be safe. Because we can see in Japan, 184 miles away from Tokyo, one of the largest cities in the world, one of the most powerful economic centers in the world, like Los Angeles. And we're not that far away from a nuclear power plant if something should go wrong. So how do you get the nuclear power plant operators to listen to what you said in 1993?
And then I repeated it again and again and again. I have been to a public hearing related to safety issues at San Onofre in 2009. NRC came, the plant managers, where their public was invited. And I published an op-ed based on my observation and problems that I saw over there. I think our two nuclear plants in California, they do the best that they can do in order to ensure the safety. But there is much more that they can do and they should be doing. That is my difference between what they do and what they should be doing.
So there is a concern of safety. And the huge economic fallout, because this is a business show. What do you see as the economics in engineering for what's happened in Japan?
A nuclear power plant is a major mega project. In some estimates, it could cost to at least $1 to $2 billion per piece. It's a major construction activity. What I see is happening in Japan, it's going to damp or dent the growth of the nuclear power industry in the world. And in some countries, it may go even down, like Germany, for example, that they said to close down some of their reactors. Some major construction companies that are involved in heavy lifting like that.
Like Bechtel.
Bechtel has been the premier nuclear power plant construction company in the world. Nuclear power plants in Arizona, all the way to Spain, are the good job of Bechtel.
So it's going to hurt some of the big multinational corporations because they're mostly involved. They all have a piece of this.
They have a piece of that. These are the construction company, heavy reactor builders, some major electronic company that they make this SCADA supervisory control and data acquisition, the software and hardware for these nuclear power plants. And also some other service companies that they provide all sorts of services to these companies. There will be a major ripple effect, at least in some sectors of the economy.
Dr. Mishkati, incredibly interesting interview. We'll have to have you back. I'm sure we're going to be watching this.
Thank you.
We're told that it's going to be months and months that we're going to be watching this.
Thank you. It was really indeed a pleasure.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks a lot for good questions.
You're watching L.A. Business Today. Fox Empire mogul Rupert Murdoch has promoted his 38-year-old son, James, to third-in-command of the film, television, and news empire. Though Fox has substantial holdings in L.A., James Murdoch will be working out of New York overseeing Fox Broadcasting, MySpace, The Wall Street Journal, and The Times of London. Locally-owned media in L.A. has long been a thing of the past.
And who would have ever thought that KCT would be moving out of their landmark building on Sunset Boulevard and possibly selling their property to the Church of Scientology? KCT looking for a new home after it split with PBS. Is there room here in Japantown?
Thanks for joining us and watching L.A. Business Today. I'm Sharon Jimenez.
And I'm Bob Jimenez. We'll see you again next week.
L.A. City View Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Mr. Labange and Mr. Garcetti, we're ready to go. We're still awaiting a quorum, but in the meantime, we can move forward with presentations.
Madam President, may I introduce the very fine and outstanding member of council who represents the district adjacent to mine? If it's okay at this time, Madam President, we're rolling. We're rolling. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Here we go. Just a second here. Please welcome Council President Eric Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. And thank you, Mr. Labange, for joining together and having me join you for this presentation. It is our honor here in Los Angeles where here in this great building of architecture throughout the city, we celebrate what is perhaps one of the greatest architectural cities anywhere in the world, a place that has attracted certainly throughout the 20th century, the greatest architects that worked in the world and into the 21st century that continue to do that. I can think right now, we could walk four blocks in three different directions and find three different Pritzker Prize winners of the last decade just here downtown. When we walk through our neighborhoods in the Hollywood Hills and Silver Lake in Los Feliz, we can see some of the great architectural works as well. And so today, it is our honor to celebrate one of the greatest architects of modern times, John Lotner, and his 100th birthday with John Lotner Day here in the city of Los Angeles. Lotner put his touch on the face of Los Angeles, designing masterpieces like the Chemosphere that soar out of the Hollywood Hills, the famed round structure that we've seen in so many movies from Body Double to, I don't know, we could probably name it four or 500 different shows that have showed it. He also developed the Googie style, which influenced iconic diners like Mel's on Sunset and Johnny's on Wilshire and Fairfax. And his vision for what Los Angeles should be like and what the Los Angeles of the future would be like still endures today. It is very much these iconic buildings and this visionary style that he had that defined that open space and that place that was Los Angeles. We have a little bit of a slideshow that we can, I guess, go through here. I hope this has been shown, but some of his greatest hits. A little Axel Foley in the background. While we don't have the music, we certainly are enjoying the Ostercarling House, 1947, Schaefer House in Glendale. Some of these we are just remarking are actually for sale today, and some of them have been designated historic cultural monuments in the city. Schaefer House, right now, available for sale. I get no commission whatsoever. Anyway, we are really pleased to announce and to celebrate today, July 16th, John Lotner Day in the city of Los Angeles. And with that, I'd like to hand over to the Chair of our Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging Committee, a man also who lives very close to the house where John Lotner himself lived for many, many years, Councilmember from the 4th District, Tom Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Being born and raised in Silver Lake, it's special. And architecture is special. Right now in the John F. R. Chambers, look at this ceiling. Someone thought about this room, to make this room important. Someone thought about how important it must be. Architects are very important. John Lotner was extremely important to come to Los Angeles at a time and to create these homes that now still stand today and are recognized. In the centennial of his birth, we're here to salute, along with Los Angeles County Museum of Art and LACMA, with a John Lotner Day all day tomorrow. With us today is Chris Carr, who's the Foundation Vice President, who will say a few words too. But I just have one little confession. The Silvertop House, when we were kids, I mean, we were little kids, it was summertime, and no one was in the house, but they had a pool. And we made sure the pool got used. And it was fun. And the interesting thing about this pool, Madam City Clerk, is they had glass on the side of it, so you could swim underneath and try to look out, and you'd see the images of the city, which is so special. So along with Mr. Garcetti, and throughout the city, architecture is so important in a variety of ways, but in the cluster in the hillside areas, as well as the Wilshire Center and parts of the San Fernando Valley, John Lotner made his impression throughout. So we're here to salute him. And now I'd like to call on Chris Carr, who's the Foundation Vice President, for a few remarks on what is a legendary Architect's Day, and we remember him. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And Tom, you were in the swimming in a pool that was probably the first infinity-edge pool in the world.
Wow, wow, wow. I know. Our brothers, we loved it, but I don't think we knew how to spell infinity.
Yes. So John, along with his predecessor and hero, Frank Lloyd Wright, changed the look of our modern architecture, really looking at modern architecture as organic architecture that really fit the city, fit the landscape. So here, we're very lucky in Los Angeles that that's where he came and had his practice. He built projects around the world, but not as many as here in Los Angeles. So this week kicks off a one-year celebration of John Lotner's 100th birthday. It's a centennial with many events going on that take place in this great city. I'm very honored as a lifetime Angelino, three to four generations. And this is very special, that we are really celebrating a person with his own day that represents this built environment of ours, that wouldn't be here without architects, contractors, and developers that love this city, and the workers that put this together, skilled specialty people that make our city. So with this thank you, I just want to mention that Carol Lotner-Petersen is our president. She's on a plane right now, coming to start this celebration from John's home in Marquette, Michigan. There'll be some exhibitions held there in September. So we will have her on board at LACMA tomorrow. And please join in on this celebration for the whole year. Our theme is preservation of these buildings. John Lotner has two on your register here in the city, and we hope to have many more. So look on our website, look at Los Angeles, enjoy modern architecture.
Chris, thank you very much. I appreciate that you mentioned preservation. Excuse me. Mr. Bernstein, here's the Office of Preservation. Please, for a few remarks, please run with Ken Bernstein.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilmembers. On behalf of the city's Office of Historic Resources, we're very proud to be part of this celebration and want to thank Councilmembers Garcetti and Labange for bringing this into the council this morning, and thank the Lotner Foundation for all of their work in preserving and recognizing the work of this original, truly original architect. Just on behalf of the city, we have a number of Lotner works that are already city historic cultural monuments, some of which you saw, the Chemosphere House, the Goldstein Office, which was actually relocated out of Century City and preserved with the partnership of LACMA, which is a partner in this weekend's activities, Silvertop, and many others. And as part of our citywide historic resources survey, Survey LA, which is underway, we'll be beginning our first-ever comprehensive citywide historic resources survey in the Silver Lake community, starting in January. And it'll be a wonderful opportunity to recognize and identify other Lotner works as the precursor for their preservation and further recognition. So congratulations to the Lotner Foundation, the Lotner family, and thank you again for bringing this in.
Ken, thank you very much, Eric. And what is nice in having to live in Silver Lake and be born there, now often I see people with books, tour books, architectural books, they'll be coming and looking, and I'll learn things, things that I didn't know. So we want to salute everybody. So Chris, step up here right now. This is John Lotner Day and Week in Los Angeles. Ken, get in here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange and Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Zine, are you ready to go?
Bring the whole group up. Don't be shy. Everybody, the whole office, bring them all up. Well, there's always a arrival and a departure, and in this case, it's a departure of a lady who has a very important position within the Los Angeles Police Department, and she's moved on to greener pastures, maybe, but an incredible career. Nicole C. Brishon, undergraduate from Princeton University, J.D. from UCLA School of Law. While in law school, founded the UCLA Women's Law Journal and served as its co-editor-in-chief during her third year. Following in law school, joined law firm Stuttman, Tressler, Glatte Bankruptcy Boutique, where she represented mostly corporate debtors in Chapter 11 bankruptcy proceedings. From there, joined the law firm Aurel Manila, where she worked on civil litigation and white-collar criminal defense matters. Left private practice, joined Los Angeles City Attorney's Office, where she spent five years in a criminal side of the office prosecuting a variety of misdemeanors, including domestic violence, narcotics, and gang-related crimes. From there, spent over a year, Police Department of the City Attorney's Office, representing the police department and individual officers, first in connection with the pitch-ist request for police officers' personnel records, and later in connection with civil litigation matters. And in 2002, 2002, became Assistant Inspector General with the Office of the Inspector General. In that position, she held the Complaint Intake and Review Section, as well as the Special Projects Unit, where she oversaw the review of the department's investigations of the May Day incident. In 2010, appointed by the Board of Police Commissioners to serve as the Inspector General. Former president of the Women's Lawyer Association of Los Angeles, continues to serve on their Board of Governors. And she is now taking a new position as a Commissioner with the courts. And she's here with her husband, her mom, family members, and members of the staff of the Inspector General's Office, which I've been informed is down about seven personnel from its authorized strength. And the Inspector General's Office of the Los Angeles Police Department is responsible in making sure that the police department's investigations are done in a proper fashion. So it's sad to see her depart for another adventure, but the adventure of the courts obviously is a step ahead from her experience, what she's gained here, what she's gained in the City Attorney's Office, what she's gained in the private sector. So she has a wealth of knowledge to take to the bench. So we want to acknowledge, and this resolution for the people of Los Angeles, the members of the Los Angeles Police Department, the City Council, and we recognize you for your wonderful accomplishments. And your wonderful husband, I must say, is a friend because he's a Harley guy. No, he's not a Harley guy. He's a motorcycle. We're trying to get that. He's a motorcycle rider. We've done motorcycle riding together. But with all blessings to you.
Thank you.
And your future endeavors and your future interest in the criminal justice system. So on behalf of the people of Los Angeles, our City Council, our family, this resolution for you. And Madam Chair, it's time for her to make some comments? There you go. Okay.
It's always dangerous to give a lawyer a microphone. I just want to thank all of you. This is a great honor. I can't believe I've been with the city 16 years, nine years with the Office of the Inspector General. That's the longest time I've spent any place, and it's real bittersweet to leave. It was just a decision that was tough to make, but a good time for me in my life and a good time for me and my family. I want to thank everybody. I'm just so lucky to get to come to work every day and do a job that I love. There are not many people out there who can say that, and especially not a lot of lawyers who can say that they get to go to work and that they like what they do. So I thank you all for that opportunity. And I'd like to thank all the partners that we've had over the years that's made our office what it is. Many of you here, sitting around the horseshoe. I know Councilmember Zine, anything we wanted, you know, he's willing to listen to us and do whatever he can in these tough budget times. I want to thank Councilmember Perry and Councilmember Parks. I know you all have been very supportive of the work that our office has done over the years, and I hope that support will continue with my predecessor. And I also want to thank the partners in this process of the department. Mr. Teefank, our partner in crime, he's just been amazing. He's a shy man. He's an amazing resource, and I'm going to take partial credit for bringing him over to the Inspector General's Office way back when, when he interviewed as an Assistant Inspector General. Andre Barat and I both saw what amazing resource he would be to the city, and obviously, he's proven everybody right. Our partners from LAPD, I know Commander Rick Webb from Internal Affairs is here, and you can't think of a better partner in civilian oversight. He's just been amazing. I understand that Commander Mike Williams, I've seen him promote from lieutenant to commander. It's nice to see him here. Captain Anita Ortega. I just want to thank all of them, and of course, my wonderful commissioners. And finally, my office, all of you, you work hard every, every day. They are all representatives of what is the best of this city. These folks come to work every day. They don't know if they're going to be furloughed, not furloughed. They don't know if they're going to lose their pay increases or not, and they come to work every single day, and they do an amazing job. And I really can't do, we can't do this work without them. And Councilmember Zine asked me, your whole office is here, how can you have some staffing issues? Why isn't anyone back there doing work? So for all of you, you get to work an hour later to make up for the time that you're here, so we make sure that we get all our work done. Thank you all, and thank you for this opportunity.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And before we go to our next presentation, I believe Ms. Hahn is in the chamber, and I would, on behalf of all of us, give her congratulations and celebrate her victory. I understand she's being sworn in to Congress next week, so I hope this is not the last time we see her, but it may be one of the last times she's actually able to participate in a council meeting. So Ms. Hahn, would you like to say a few words? All right, we're going to do something at the end. But congratulations and welcome back in, and big victory. All right, the next presentation will be... Yeah. Council District 8, and then Council District 9.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'd ask you to join me on this presentation. Colleagues, today, we're going to honor a group that basically is keeping a dream alive, the B.B. Moore Campbell National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. And I'd ask at this time that Attorney Ellis...
And I'd ask at this time that Attorney Ellis Gordon Jr. come up, also Madeleine Cobb Brown, Lynn Goodlow, and that's Dr. Lynn Goodlow, and also Belaney Brown, come up at this time. These are folks that we work with very closely in NAMI, primarily in the Limerick Park area and the South Los Angeles area. And we work with them because, as we know, in communities that are poor, come on up here, that are poor, often they do not have access to medical care, and specifically, what is very important is mental health. And mental illness is one of the leading causes of disabilities in the United States, affecting one of four families and victimizing both those with the mental illness and those who care for them. Two-thirds of the people with the mental illness do not seek treatment due to stigma, a lack of community-based resources, inadequate or no diagnosis. The National Institute of Mental Health reports that people suffer from more than one mental disorder at a given time, and forty-five percent have two or more disorders, where one often leads to the others, such as diabetes, cardiovascular disease, HIV/AIDS, and cancer. In 1999, the Surgeon General report cited that more than fifty-four million Americans had a mental disorder, but fewer than eight million seek treatment. Further, Caucasians are more likely to receive treatment than African-Americans, and African-Americans are misdiagnosed at a higher rate. Communities of color need resources with faith, culture, custom, and values are considered in treatment and diagnosis. And let me, Ms. Perry, come up and finish the presentation.
Okay, thank you. BB Moore Campbell's interest in mental health was sparked by a family member's struggle with mental illness. Her dedication and commitment to support mental wellness through effective treatment options, open access to mental health services, improved community outreach, and support for those with brain disorders, and her tireless advocacy and fight to bring awareness and attention to mental illness among minorities remains unmatched. Furthermore, she authored the New York Times bestselling novel, Seventy-Two Hour Hold, and her children's book, Sometimes My Mommy Gets Angry, which brings both awareness to the plight of those with brain disorders and mental illness. So, today, we recognize the late BB Moore Campbell as a mother, a grandmother, a wife, a friend, an advocate, a celebrated writer and journalist, a noted author, a radio commentator, a community activist, and co-founder of the National Alliance on Mental Illness Urban Los Angeles. By adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council does hereby declare July 2011 as BB Moore Campbell National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Los Angeles. All right. Sorry. This is kind of heavy. Come on, everybody, come on.
We're going to take the frame before you leave. Now, why don't you come up and speak in behalf of the organization?
On behalf of my late wife, BB Moore Campbell, and the NAMI Urban Los Angeles chapter, board members and affiliates, it is with great honor that I accept this proclamation. And also, would like to thank Councilman Parks and Councilperson Perry for being so supportive of the association, so that we can get the word out that there is a need for more help in the minority communities for mental health awareness. Typically, because we are minorities, there is a stigma already, and we do not want to make sure that help is available to those minority members. And it should be noted, as Councilman Parks said, that one in four people either suffer from mental illness or have a family member that has suffered from mental illness. And to end this, as they say, gratitude is a poem whispered from one heart to another. So, from my heart to yours, thank you so very much for honoring it. And we also, we're having a tomorrow at my home, we're having a fundraising event to celebrate BB Moore Campbell, Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. And as may have been noted before, this was a resolution that was passed by Congress in 2008, so it's actually a national phenomenon with regard to the month of July. So, we invite all of you that want to come out, you can go to the website, namiurbanlosangels.org to get more information on the event tomorrow. It's from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., tomorrow, the sixteenth.
Thank you. Next, we will go to CD Nine and Councilwoman Jan Perry for her next presentation.
And I think, Mr. Parks, Mr. Parks, you might want to step back in here when you have a minute. This is regarding the Ron Tudor Center, and I know you wanted to say a few words.
I'm sure Mr. Krikorian is a Trojan will add his good wishes. It's very difficult for Trojans not to speak out for each other.
It's my pleasure to welcome the, Mr. Krikorian, do you want to come in? We're going to talk about the Ron Tudor Center. Where...
Oh, I just forgot.
Okay, okay. My pleasure to welcome today so many Trojans and others responsible for the new Ron Tudor Campus Center at the University of Southern California. This was a collaborative effort between the University of Southern California, thank you for that, yes. Somebody needs to hold it up, just for the record.
I'm sorry, we're going to have to ask you to put any banners down. It's just a blanket policy. It's a blanket policy, nothing to do with USC.
Well, in that case, you don't mind if I change ties then, do you?
A collaborative effort between the University of Southern California, let's see if we can hang it like this, then, it just fell over there. Yeah, that's not bad. Okay, Tudor Saliba, AC Martin, Bright Works Incorporated, and a multitude of, a cast of thousands. But what it's resulted in is a building ready to meet the challenges of the 21st century. Not only is this Ronald Tudor Campus Center a world-class facility providing much-needed space for campus activities and organizations, it is one of the most environmentally friendly buildings in the greater Los Angeles area, and it's one of the new developments to earn a gold lead certification from the United States Green Building Certification Institute for its efforts in construction to promote sustainability. Now, that is no small feat. This building, while Mr. Parks and I share not only our Trojan backgrounds, but we share boundaries and parts of USC, so I will let the councilmen of the primary campus say a few words, and then ask Mr. Krikorian to say a few words.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Having you pointed at something.
Right there.
Okay. This multilateral effort has produced the project with the highest resource efficiency and the lowest carbon footprint in operation and construction, highlighting just a few of the features of the new Ron Tudor Campus Center. The building can boast a thirty percent reduction in energy use over baseline and a land irrigation demand of fifty percent below baseline. Over seventy percent of its energy use will be able to be offset by use of renewable energy credits. And the project earned all four alternative transportation credits and exemplary performance for its transportation demands and management plan. These efforts to promote sustainability within our community will allow for the students in the community to continue to make Los Angeles a leader in education and innovation across the world. Having been at the facility, it's absolutely a beautiful addition to the campus and will provide tremendous service for those students and also the faculty that are on campus. And we look forward to that continued effort as they move and look to expand the development north of the campus to bring students closer in line to their activities. And I think it's going to be a major, major benefit to the community as we move forward on USC development.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Having spent a considerable portion of my life in the Student Activity Center at USC, I can tell you that it seemed old then. And so, getting rid of it and replacing it with the new Tudor Center has been a great, great improvement to the campus. And the fact that USC is once again taking the lead in set, excuse the pun, is exercising its leadership in demonstrating a commitment to economics, environmental sustainability, I think is, once again, a great example of leadership. And the educational arena is so ripe for us to really make progress in conserving electricity and water and other natural resources. It's great to have USC taking the lead once again. And so, I'm pleased to recognize, representing the University of Southern California Administration today, we have Stan Westfall, Michael Jackson, Jason Cruz, and Patrick Bailey. Representing Lead AP, Bright Works Inc. is Annie Argento. Representing AC Martin is Dave Martin, Bob Murin, George Von Gilu, and Tammy Zhao. Representing Tudor Saliba Corporation is Gassan Aricat and Billy Becerra. And representing Glumac is Glenn Kuramoto. Congratulations to all of you on such a great example for the rest of the country.
Thank you. So, if we could ask Stan Westfall and Gassan, if Gassan is not present, William Becerra to come forward and just say a few words with Dave Martin.
Thank you.
Okay, somebody come first.
Were those units transferable anywhere as students?
Representing the University of Southern California, I really want to thank the entire team that worked with us, and that includes all the city's staff and inspectors, plan checkers, everybody that helped make this project possible. We've tried to create a really nice new home for student affairs and for all the students at the university. I think we've done that. We also have a lot of our hospitality, our new emissions center, the Epstein Family Emissions Center is there. And we've tried to give the place where the students can have a home away from home and a good reason to stay in the neighborhood and enjoy the Ninth District.
And the Eighth.
And the Eighth, excuse me, Eighth and Ninth, excuse me.
All right, great, thank you. Dave Martin?
Well, thank you so much. This is a very green, very sustainable building. These things don't happen easily. It took a tremendous effort on the part of the university and Tudor Saliba, and we were just very pleased to be on the team and to achieve such a high mark. So, thank you.
Mr. Aricat, on behalf of Tudor Saliba...
Tudor Saliba.
For this job.
On behalf of Tudor Saliba, I want to thank all City Council members for recognizing the whole team, and it was a big team effort, and thank you all.
Is that everybody? That's everybody. Okay, so, we're going to close with "Fiedon, Trojans," thank you. That's right. Thank you. Let's take our banner and go.
If Mr. Smith was here, he would be playing music from his desk, but we'll have to imagine it instead.
We're going to go back.
Next, I'd like to recognize from the Fourth Council District, Mr. Tom Labange for our final presentation. I believe he was, he had stepped away for a minute. Why don't we run through the agenda in the meantime, real quick, while we're waiting Mr. Labange? Please call the roll.
Alakon Cardenas, Englander Han, Wizar Kretz, Krikorian Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendall Weston, Zine Garcetti, twelve members present, according to Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Ms. Han moves, and Mr. Englander seconds. Without an objection, that'll be approved. Next order of business?
Committory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Alakon moves, and Mr. Cardenas seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. If we can run through the agenda, colleagues, any items you wish to call special, you can please call them now, first items.
Items one through three are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call one through three special? Okay, number two for Mr. Parks. Anybody wishing to call one or three special? One or three special?
Number one.
Number one for Mr. Rosendall. If nobody wishes to call three special, then, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote on number three.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Items four through thirty-two are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration. There's requests to continue item five till Wednesday, July twentieth.
Okay. If there is no objection to that continuation, we will go ahead and continue. Yeah, Mr. City Attorney, and then Mr. Kretz, on this one, Mr. Kretz, on the continuation? Okay, Mr. Kretz.
Yes, I have a conflict because my wife, through Kaiser, serves on the bid board, so I can't vote on this, even the continuance motion. So, if I could be...
So, you'd have to recuse yourself on Wednesday.
Yes, on anything relating to this, including the continuation motion.
So, if this one could just be called special for now, and then the rest of the items...
We'll call it special, and then we'll make sure we, and what we may do is, you can recuse yourself, and I know there are folks here, if they want to testify today, we're more than happy to hear their testimony after Mr. Kretz recuses himself, but then we would continue it until Wednesday. The reason why is, we need twelve votes to have it happen in a first reading, otherwise an ordinance goes to a second reading one week later, and I know Friday is our deadline next week, so we need to make sure there's twelve members with Ms. Han. Being sworn in as a Congresswoman, we will not have the requisite number that we need to. So, more than happy, though, folks want to hang out to hear the testimony today, so you don't have to come back on Wednesday. I don't want to predispossess what will happen, but I think Mr. Labange and I will be able to carry it on Wednesday quite well. But that said, we will just call it special for now. Okay, other items with cards or specials from members? Number ten for Mr. Parks. Mr. Labange?
Real quick, special.
Number four?
That's the Major L Ordinance information.
And we have cards on any of these, Madam Clerk?
Yes, there's cards on items six, seven, eight, nine.
I have a card on four and five here, too. Okay, we'll close the other public hearings. Other specials? Mr. Alakon, did you have a special? Or just enjoying the view? All right. So, let's take up items eleven through fourteen. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. With that, we'll recognize Mr. Labange for our next presentation. Very special adventurer, climber, and champion.
We'd like to have the Vice Governor, please come forward real quick for a very fast hello from our sister city of Guangzhou, China. She is the Vice Chancellor of the region. Good to see you, and we ask her interpreter come right real quick, and we say hello to Guangzhou, China. Please say hello and translate.
Hi, we're from the Municipal People Congress of Guangzhou, and we're very glad to be here, having our visit to Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
We've started this relationship thirty years ago with Guangzhou Friendship Association, and we've developed a lot of relationships and events, a lot of communication and technologies.
We've built great relationships over the years, and we welcome you to visit Guangzhou, and we hope that our friendship will be everlasting. Thank you very much.
It is everlasting. We thank the late, great Tom Bradley and John Ferraro, who created this. And on behalf of the City Council Secretary, Jean-Jacques Chugan, Chez Chez, welcome. Okay. And what we have right here is what you see is international, whether... And what we have right here is what you see is international, whether it's Guangzhou. But now we have, I think, the strongest man in the world. I'd like to have our special friends from our Korean-American community to come here today. We are seeing a very special person here who has climbed every mountain, every mountain of height throughout the world. The first Korean to hold the distinction of a Himalaya crown, the first man in the world to climb 60 of the highest Himalaya peaks, and the founder of the Young Hong Jin Foundation. Please welcome Young Hong Jin. I will tell you, as you'll know, throughout our districts, as diverse as they are, there are many people from all over the world. But the Korean-Americans in Los Angeles find the mountains. They find the mountains and climb the mountains. And we have the most special climber of all mountains in the world who's with us today for this gentleman has achieved greatness. I was thinking of you minutes ago. I've been to the top of City Hall. I've been to the top of the First Interstate Building. I've been to the top of City Hall East. I've been to the top of a few others. You've been to the tops of big mountains, big mountains, and the ability to see out and have a vision. And you can see from the many friends who are here today, which is so important, that we want to salute all of you for this special recognition. But first and foremost, for your work on this day that we make for you in Los Angeles, on this day that we salute you as someone who has achieved such gracious. On this day, you're the Man of the Year for the United Nations in the areas of our Korean community, for this day of all the work you've done as an ambassador for Korea. Because those, whether they're musicians, athletes, or artists, make a big difference in the lives of others. So I want to say to you, Mr. Hong Gil, I present this to you with congratulations from all the members of the City Council. Come Samida. Thank you very much. And also, Jai Hoo Lee, who is the founder, chairman of this foundation. We commend you for your continued dedication for the Young Hong Gil Human Foundation, for your tireless efforts and all the work that you do. Congratulations to you as well. And Busan is a sister city. Let's hear it for Busan, huh? Busan, okay? But Seoul, in Seoul, Madam City Clerk, in Seoul, there's a mountain called the Nam Sung. And I see many Koreans-Americans hiking in Los Angeles in the Griffith Park Mountains, and they get to the top of Mount Hollywood. We call it Nam Sung North. So it's special to have you today. Please say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you for inviting us here today. And in my life, there are five important days. The first one is my birthday. It was 1960 that he was born. The second one is 1988, September 26th. He climbed the highest mountain ever, 8,850 meters high.
Yeah, 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 September 26th summit day.
The third is 2007, May 31st. He climbed above 8,000 meters, the 16th highest peaks on earth, on this earth. He's the first man to do that. And the fourth is 2008, May 28th. He created the澳门吉尔Human Foundation to aid third world countries. And lastly, the fifth, the most important one, is the day that you are celebrating, honoring, you know, me as an澳门吉尔Day here in Los Angeles. And I really am grateful and honored to be here. And I guess, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Come Samida. Come Samida. Tomorrow morning, we're going to make it another special day. We're going hiking in Griffith Park. Come Samida. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, councilmen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Would the folks who are here for these talks, I would bid like to give testimony today? Yes, okay. So Mr. Karetz, Mr. Karetz, if you want to recuse yourself at this moment, if you want to recuse yourself, we'll -- we may or may not take action on the item that you're going to recuse yourself from, and we'll come get you. Okay, let's go ahead and take that out of order then. Item number five, and we'd like to invite forward folks to speak. Mike Swanson is our first speaker. After that is Harvey Shield.
Good morning. My name is Mike Swanson. I'm the...
Just move the microphone a little bit so we can get the points to you. Perfect, now we can hear you better.
My name is Mike Swanson. I'm the Vice Chairman of the East Hollywood Business Improvement District, and my day job is Facilities Administrator at Hollywood Presbyterian Medical Center. And we have overwhelming support from our constituents from the neighborhood for our Business Improvement District renewal. And we're excited to be able to move forward to not only continue the maintenance, but also to move forward with capital improvements that are badly needed for the Vermont Corridor. So we urge the council to support this. And again, we are excited, and hopefully you are, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your continuing work in activism. Harvey is our next speaker, then Arnold Sacks will follow up to that.
Good morning. My name is Harvey Shield. I'm on the Board of the East Hollywood Business Improvement District, and I'm President of Temple Knesset Israel on Vermont Avenue. I'm very proud of the work that the BID has done in its first five years of existence. Many of the programs that we've initiated will benefit our neighborhood for years to come. I'm also very happy about the personal relations, relationships that we've established between the various business owners. The support of the petition has been overwhelming, over 70%. And I'd ask the council to approve renewal of the Business Improvement District for another 10 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your work as well and of the temple. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker, and then Jacques Masachi.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Would you mind if I was to speak last, because I tied all the bids together about some general information?
We should go in order, so why don't you just speak on this one?
Because I wanted to speak on five, six, seven, and eight altogether, because there's different...
Okay, why don't you have a seat? We'll hear from Mr. Masachi. If you can stay close, please.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jacques.
My name is Jacques Masachi. I am a property owner in this district, and I'm also a board member of this BID. My experience with the BID, I can only report to you that this BID is very efficient. What we have accomplished in the other BIDs, the medians along Vermont that is about to be installed or about to be there, these guys have done it so efficiently, so fast. And I think I urge the council to renew the BID for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our public speakers. Seeing no one left on this item, Councilmember Garcetti.
And Mr. Sacks will include you together on the next ones. This one, I'm going to ask that this be continued today, folks, for the reasons that I said, but I did want to stand and just thank the East Hollywood community, the Chamber of Commerce, the East Hollywood folks, the bids that have been there in the Hollywood area, really with the inspiration behind this. And I've been proud to personally lobby businesses, talk to LACC, others, negotiate to make sure that what we saw happen in the west part of Hollywood would happen, and central part of Hollywood, would happen also in the east edge of Hollywood, which is as vibrant, in some ways, has even a higher population density, even as great potential as central Hollywood, to see the business community and government partner together. And where we certainly don't look at Business Improvement Districts as an excuse not to do government's job, but it's a great supplement to what government can do on beautification projects, on transportation improvements. And East Hollywood is on the move. It is one of the most vibrant neighborhoods anywhere in Los Angeles. You look at the investment from folks who have been there for a long time, from institutions like our religious institutions, some of our business folks. We know what those lean years were like in the past, and we're very proud to have those behind us. But if you look at the investments that our hospitals are making, Children's Hospital just opened up a brand-new building, which myself and Mayor Villarosa were at, that we spent many years, a state-of-the-art facility to heal young people from around not only this region, but this country. Kaiser has done the same thing as well. LACC, the investments that we've put in with a subway that now runs through the backbone of East Hollywood. Barnes-Dahl, which I asked Project Restore to look at state funding. We got historic funding. It is really just a super place to do business. It's a super place to live. The bicycle kind of district that has blossomed there, the beginning or end, depending which way you're going, of Ciclavia, which has closed down the streets, to be able to enjoy that. We look forward to the Business Improvement District moving forward for another decade. And you have my strongest support. I know Mr. Labange strongly supports it as well. But in the interest of parliamentary procedures and making sure we get to our deadline, I will ask, colleagues, that we continue this until next Wednesday. We will have 12 members, even with Ms. Han gone, and a couple members excused, to be able to pass this on a first reading. I'll ask for your full support then. We'll make sure Mr. Karetz is kicked out of the room. I'm sure he would support it, but his wife has really been a super part of the board in her work at Kaiser Hospital, and he's done the right thing to make sure he's not part of the decision today. But we appreciate her work and the entire work of all the board. Thank you to the folks who testified here today, and let's hear it for East Hollywood. Hooray for East Hollywood.
When a member's kicked out of the room, that's just another form of saying they recuse themselves. That having been said, that's the -- we're going to put this item over. To what date?
Wednesday, the 20th.
Wednesday, July 20th. Okay, next item.
Item number one, called special by Councilmember Rosendall.
Okay, Mr. Rosendall, item number one.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Could we ask Jaime to come on up? This has to do with the appointment of Jaime de la Vega as the Permanent General Manager of the Department of Transportation. And we had a discussion on it in committee meeting. We're very excited about him coming in. For many of you to know, you know, he was, he has been the Deputy Mayor for Transportation. He's been in the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office, and he's been Assistant Deputy Mayor for Mayor Riordan. So he has quite a background in city government and various aspects of it. Let me just go to a couple of hard questions first, and I'll ask my colleagues to join in. Traffic congestion is a big issue in this city. It's probably one of the biggest morning-afternoon issues. And now we've got the Comageddon, and the whole world's talking about it, and so on and so forth. We've built our roadways to full capacity to accommodate the automobile, and frankly, we've hit the end of that opportunity. With 40% of all trips taken under two miles or less, it would appear we could reduce congestion by improving our bicycle and pedestrian facilities. And I say that because last Saturday, I rode a bike for the first time in 30 years. I want to get over my fear of riding a bicycle. But if we found other modes of transportation, when we only have a two-mile opportunity for 40% of what we do, I'd like to get your sense about the five-year bike plan, where we are on that, and some of the mass transit projects that you've played great leadership on with Measure R in Washington.
Thank you, Councilman. I think the department and the city as a whole is going to need to transition to more of a multimodal focus on transportation. That means more of an emphasis on transit, cycling, and pedestrian improvements. That doesn't mean we're going to abandon our mission to optimize traffic flow on the city streets. There will still be cars, but we do need to make a transition to alternative modes to give people choices that are fast, reliable, and healthy. The department needs to implement the bicycle plan, especially the five-year implementation plan. We need to implement safe routes to schools, and of course, continue to partner with MTA in building the major transit projects, the subway, light rail lines, and busways.
There's been audits done and reports given out on the traffic officers and some of the strategies used with constituents to deal with issues. Now that you're in charge of the department, have you had a chance to look into some of those issues? And what's your initial reflection on all of that?
Yes, thank you, Councilman. I have had a chance to look at that. I think you know that Commander Mike Williams from LAPD is on loan to the department. He's been point on working with the traffic officers in parking enforcement. I think the first thing I want to say is, most of the women and men in parking enforcement and traffic control are dedicated public servants, very hardworking, and committed to both the department and the city as a whole. As far as, you know, recent activity, we've really focused on looking at the policies and procedures in the department, discipline, supervision, and training. For example, we're going to be sending all of the supervisors and command staff to LAPD Academy for supervisory training, which I think is something that's long overdue and which the leaders in that bureau really want to see happen.
That's it I have at the moment, colleagues? Anybody want to discuss anything?
We have Mr. Cardness and Mr. Zion. Mr. Cardness is our next speaker.
Jaime, can you please remind the people of Los Angeles, a lot of us elected officials know your involvement and how many years you've been involved in the process of transportation within the city of Los Angeles, the county of Los Angeles, et cetera. And can you please let us know what your involvement has been with the local transportation authority, which the city of Los Angeles is entirely within, and how that complements your abilities and your authority as the head of the transportation of the department within the city of Los Angeles?
Okay, thank you, Councilman. I've been working either for the city or with the city in the area of transportation policy since 1993. I've previously served on the MTA Board of Directors. I currently serve on the MetroLink Board of Directors, and I've worked for two different mayoral administrations. I think that, you know, the relationships I have at those other agencies of which the city is a part can really be strengthened by my presence at DOT in understanding sort of how they fund and develop projects, how I can help the council and mayor be part of that process to make sure that your interests and the needs of your constituents are well represented.
Well, one of the problems that you might have is, people think of the second-largest city in the country, the Transportation Department, and they might look at you and say, this guy's too young to be experienced enough to know what he's doing. How long ago have you, was it that you started to work on transportation matters in and around the city of Los Angeles?
Yeah, I started that in 1993, Councilman. So 18 years.
Okay, close to 20 years now. And that involvement was with a private company, or that involvement was with a government authority that has a lot to do with the city of LA?
Yeah, I've done both sides. I've been a management consultant to the mayor's office on transportation policy. I've worked in the development and implementation of transportation policy for both Mayor Riordan and Mayor Villarosa, and have been, you know, at the center of a number of major policy issues, including the federal consent decree to improve bus service at the MTA, the development of Measure R, the recent sales tax initiative to fund transit and highway improvements, and the development of America Fast Forward in 310, the idea of getting federal assistance so that we can build projects faster here in Los Angeles and create thousands of jobs.
Okay. Well, thank you for giving us a little snippet of your resume. And again, I think it's important because people need to understand that sometimes we might hire somebody from the other side of the world to be the head of one of our departments, or the other side of the country, or what have you. But sometimes you have someone who actually knows what they're doing from a technical basis and has sound policy abilities and interpretation abilities, yet at the same time, they actually know the internals of what's going on here, which I believe helps any person of any department hit the ground running. So my compliments to you and all the work that you've done over the years, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Mr. Zion is our next speaker, then Mr. Englander.
Thank you, Mr. President. The position that you held previous to this appointment is what?
Deputy Mayor of Transportation for Mayor Villarosa.
And how many years in that capacity?
Six years.
So...
The position that you held previous to this appointment is what?
Deputy Mayor of Transportation for Mayor Villarogosa.
And how many years in that capacity?
Six years.
So during that period of time, you had, what type of responsibility is the deputy mayor over transportation?
I've had four primary areas. It was overseeing policy development and implementation at LA DOT, MTA, Lawa, and MetroLink.
So as far as the daily activities of department transportation, the enforcement efforts, the other efforts of DOT, did you have any involvement in that, or was that held by other individuals within department transportation?
I did not have operational responsibility. That was the responsibility of the management at DOT.
So if someone were to say that you had experience, your experience was on a different level, and you didn't have any activity or experience dealing with the enforcement efforts or the folks that were actually engaged in activities with the department transportation, the employees?
Yeah, I think that's true on a day-to-day basis. I did have overall familiarity with how the department operated and the strategic and budget issues facing the department.
Okay, so now, in this capacity, as a general manager, you assume a new position. So when something happens in the department transportation and the enforcement branch or the engineering branch, you're responsible?
Yes, that's correct.
So whatever happened in the past can't hold you responsible for it, but now with this new position, you'd be the one that people would go to to say, why did this happen? Why did that happen? Why is production up? Why is production down? As Mr. Rosendahl just said, the buck stops, so the buck will stop with you.
Yes, sir.
And as far as enforcement efforts, where are those enforcement efforts at this particular time?
As I mentioned previously, we're in the process of reforming the organization operation of the Bureau of Parking Enforcement. And, you know, I'm confident that we're going to see improvements over the next year. Those women and men are going to be working this weekend as part of Carmageddon in support of MTA and Caltrans, Fire Police, and CHP. And I think you're going to be pleasantly surprised by their professionalism and performance this weekend.
So now you come into an organization as a general manager, so you really have an opportunity to mold that organization in a manner which you think is appropriate to serve the people of this great city.
That's right.
Okay, so I've heard some people say, well, this happened and that happened, and I just wanted to clarify that that happened, but you didn't have responsibility for those activities in the field as a general manager would have, and not to cast dispersion upon former general managers. But it's basically a clean slate with your direction as the new general manager to direct this in maybe a more positive fashion than we've seen in the past.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander.
All right. Just a couple of things. One, I understand that you are a Valley resident?
Yes, that's correct.
It'd be great to have a general manager from the Valley. I don't think we have too many right now, particularly transportation. You're driving in from Woodland Hills, so you'll experience firsthand the 101 as you already have every day, but now as a general manager, so it's definitely a different perspective. I think that's important for Valley residents. The culture at DOT has been one that doesn't communicate often, and doesn't communicate with neighborhood councils or residents. Oftentimes, they do things where they could be avoided, and those things cost a lot of money and take a lot of time and frustration. We had an experience on Wilbur, where they have gone through tremendous efforts trying to repair not only some bad will with the community, but the street that they came in overnight and changed against the will of the community. And so I think the communication, the culture within DOT needs to be changed to communicate with neighborhood councils, with stakeholders, with community groups, service clubs, organizations. And I want to hear a commitment on that as well. I noticed one of the first things in your resume, in the summary, in the very first sentence, it has the word communications, and I applaud you on that. But I want to make sure that we've got a communication of commitment to reach out to those stakeholders far more than we have in the past. And I think you bring that breath of fresh air from the experience that you've had, and certainly just meeting with you and talking to you about this position. That was one of the first things you brought up. I just want to have it on the record publicly that that's your commitment. I look forward to working with you in that capacity. I also wanted to throw out one other thing, and that is, I understand you went to UCLA, and there's some around this horseshoe that might hold that against you. But I wanted to point out, though, that you also are Matador, and you went to CSUN.
That's correct.
In the San Fernando Valley in the 12th District. So just if you can elaborate on the communication aspect and reaching out to neighborhood councils and stakeholders, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, you do have my commitment, Mr. Councilman, on that. I think part of it also is the department needs to work closer with the council offices. Ultimately, you know, DOT does not have the type of field staff that council offices does, and, you know, we are not as, you know, in touch on a day-to-day basis with those community groups. So I think that there's an opportunity for the department to partner with council offices so we can get the word out and have a two-way dialogue on a ongoing basis.
True. Thank you. Our last speaker is Mr. Labonge. I'll start his clock while we're waiting.
So congratulations. I think you're an outstanding young person. I've known you for 15 years plus. You're very committed to trying to do improvement. The Department of Transportation welcomes you, because if we could do it right here, I'd just ask this question. Has anybody in council chambers here been a victim of crime in the last year? I know my wife and I have. Any victims of crime? Two, me and Mr. Sacks, Connor back there. Anybody who impacts my traffic in the last 24 hours in Los Angeles, raise your hand? Everybody's raising their hand. Okay. Except your department staff, who's supposed to solve the traffic problem. I saw that. Your need is to focus on what is an issue of a lot of convergence. Obviously, safety is number one. The three E's, engineering, enforcement, and education. Education, multilingual, very important. I believe on big traffic, on big streets, and protected neighborhoods, Ms., forgive me for, because I just ran in there, but Yvonne Chang, I believe, is your specialist on neighborhood?
Pauline Chang.
Pauline Chang. Great person, who does the thought process to try to help neighborhoods. Neighborhoods are important, but on the streets, the big streets, the bicycle issue is extremely important, and how we move forward correctly, because what is happening is a transformation in the center city here, whether they're students from SC, or they live at Echo Park or Silverlake or Hollywood or Wilshire, Highland Park, people are riding bikes, long distances now, not just for pleasure. It is a way of transportation, making that work, Fourth Street Bike Way, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, using the traffic officers the right way. I know this weekend, I hope you have heavy emphasis at Hollywood and Highland, with the pedestrian safety necessary, as Coinga Pass now is the entryway to the basin for the city of Los Angeles. But what are some of your personal goals, Jaime?
Yeah, I think my personal goals are to continue my work in improving the transportation system here in Los Angeles. I'm excited to do that. You know, we have many talented men and women in the department. The senior management team's been very supportive and are excellent people, and, you know, I hope to help this council and the mayor transition the city to more of a multimodal focus in transportation, including bicycles, as you mentioned.
Great. Thank you very much. I look forward, my office and my staff look forward to working with you. And if you look at regions, because I know you're short-staffed, if you put a team of people together for six months in the East Valley, or the West Valley, or the West Side, or the Central City, or East Side, or South Side, or Harbor, to help it, because you don't have the staff that you used to, so use some creative opportunities to try to do that. And I'm glad that Commander Williams is assisted on loan from the Police Department to help the important team of the 580 officers who help keep LA moving safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. With that, that's our last speaker on the queue. We'll go ahead and open up the roll for a vote. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Mr. President, for item one, Mr. de la Vega's salary has been set for $195,917.
Okay, thank you for establishing the record. We'll go to our general public comment now. Thank you to our speakers, I mean, our audience for their patience. Our first speaker is Jeffrey Stodell. I'd like to come forward, and then after that will be Arnold Sacks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
June and almost. My name is Jeffrey Stodell. I'm a lifelong citizen, resident of the city of Los Angeles. I'm here about a problem with the golf courses, Wilson Harding Golf Courses in the Griffith Park area. Tremendous problem. Golf balls are flying out of the golf course, left and right, all across, all lanes, northbound and southbound of the I-5 freeway. This problem's been present for at least six years. I know that because six years ago, my car was hit by one of those golf balls, and since then, I've been studying the situation. I've been trying to solve the problem by first going to the City of Los City Attorney's Office, notified Mr. Del Gudillo of this in writing. Nothing has been done to stop the problem in six years. I then sued the city of Los Angeles over this, sued them for negligence for the way they maintain the golf course and allow golf balls to fly out over the I-5 freeway. I won the lawsuit. The problem hasn't stopped, it's still there today. I then personally sent letters to each of the members of the Parks and Recreation five years ago. That didn't solve the problem. It's still present now, worse than ever, and thus I come to the city council to see if they'll take action to stop this problem. It's a deadly problem. It's a problem of great risk, of civil liability for personal injury and property damage, wrongful death to the city of Los Angeles, and nobody will stop it. It's a problem of extreme magnitude. It's not an isolated occasion, incident. It's a widespread problem that I know has been happening for six years. And that's why I'm here today. No way, the courts, the city attorney's office, and the Parks and Recreation Commissioners will not take action to stop the problem. I'm here to ask the city council to take action, because this is a city property that it's happening from, and I ask you to consider closing these golf courses, only the portion adjacent to the I-5 freeway, until the problem is solved. It's a potentially deadly problem. Now, I ask you to...
I can ask you to conclude, sir.
Yeah, Mr. President, if he asks the gentleman to come to the ropes, it's the district representative who happened to walk the golf courses area yesterday. I'll be happy to receive his complaint and report back to all of you.
Thank you. We have to keep it two minutes per speaker, just to keep it even for everybody. I'm sorry, it pains me. That's why we have the clock. I announced at the beginning. But Mr. Labonge, I know, will speak with you right now as well and be able to further carry on. I've actually been hit by a golf ball from there, myself. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker, and then after that is Sethe Panosian.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. There's a few things I want to talk about, but I want to go back about the stadium. Councilman Rosendahl and his non-answer, answer, answer, non-answer. And Councilman Coretz mentioned that you need to get this decision right, because the city might be facing bankruptcy. And no councilman reacted to the bankruptcy statement like you did last year, when ex-Mayor Riordan thought that the city might be facing bankruptcy during the budget crisis. And, you know, I meant to bring it up, it's been a while, but Mayor Riordan was, ex-Mayor Riordan was in the paper again this year. He was talking about the private clubs in the city of LA that were facing financial hardships. And his great quote in the LA Times was, they were talking about two of the clubs in downtown LA, and I'm not sure which ones they were. But he mentioned that Club A was the club that was for, was the club that was for people who ran the city of LA. And Club B, another private club in downtown LA, was for the people who own LA. So nobody mentioned anything about that part of the discussion. And you think the people who own LA have left the club? By the way, only 14 more days, well, actually 16 more days to the decision. Never mind LeBron, we got the decision. I'm betting 14-0. Ayes. Which brings me back to the point about this convention center. And who's going to pay off the bonds? That question wasn't brought up for the outstanding debt on the West Hall. And how is it possible, again, $350 million is still owed on bonds for a building that was built in 1971? How long will we be paying on the LA, the new LAPD headquarters that cost over $800 million? How long will those bonds be on the market for?
Thank you. Sethe Panosian is our next speaker. After that is Dr. Clyde Williams. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sethe Panosian.
Will you move the microphone down just a little bit so we can...
Sorry.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
My family has lived in the same home in the East Hollywood District for 35 years, and I'm here today to ask Mr. Garcetti why he refuses to meet with us and our neighbors regarding this massive project that's being proposed to be built right next to my home. Over 300 of my neighbors have signed petitions against this project, which is also located right next to Kingsley Elementary School, which is going to be taller than what the zoning allows and blocks all of our winter sunlight. I've called Mr. Garcetti's office for the entire month, asking for a meeting with him, only to be told not to have my calls returned and that they won't schedule a meeting with us. President of the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council emailed Mr. Garcetti, asking why he will not meet with us. The only answer that he received from his staff member is that Councilman Garcetti is too busy. It's not acceptable to my neighbors and I that some back-room deal is being negotiated with Mr. Garcetti and the developer. We have the right to meet with our representative, and we demand to do so. Mr. Garcetti, why do you refuse to meet with us?
Not only do I not refuse to, if you want to talk right now, we can, as well as, I know we've returned your call three times and it's in two months. So we suggested the office hours, and we can talk further, but if you'd like to come up here, we can actually talk during this meeting and sit down in the further.
I would love to.
But nothing could be further than the truth. I do want to absolutely meet with you, and I know you've been in contact frequently with my staff, and they have returned your calls as well.
I would love to.
Thank you, Ms. Panosian. Appreciate it. Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker. After that is Michael Hubman.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno, Northeast LA, also LA 32 Neighborhood Council Board Member and DWP liaison. Ah, the rates, more rates. We were told that you can't project rates more than three, four, or maybe five years. Well, in the item 15, they project use of gas to the year 2035, or 2020. However, they also have already approved a gas hedging policy for gas through the year 2035 monthly, with 10 significant digits, down to one, plus or minus 1 million BTUs. So why can't we get a longer-term projection of where our rates are going? We don't know where they're going. We don't have a ratepayers advocate yet, and we're still waiting for that. And it's a matter as to why? The numbers are available, projections are available. Why can't we have a rate structure projected to at least the year 2020, so we can really see how much things are going to cost? Won't affect me very much. I have a five-kilowatt-hour-per-day use, so you could double my rates and it'd still be less than, ah, it'd still be less than my sanitation and sewage bill, which unfortunately, DWP has to issue, and they get all the blame for the high cost of the bill. But hey, how about a ratepayers advocate for sanitation, solid waste, and stormwater? Because those will be probably more than the DWP rates in the nearer future to the year 2020. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. Michael Hubman's our next speaker. After that, we'll go to Sam Pedro and Stephanie Mardesic.
My name is Michael Hubman. I'm a human rights and homeless rights activist. I'm an organizer with the Right to Share Food Coalition, and it's been a while, but it's my intent to be more regular here. I'd like to congratulate Councilmember Han on her election to Congress, a true victory for liberals and Democrats. Los Angeles, you've done nothing to get out from under the shadow of the designation by the Coalition for the Homeless as the meanest city in America. Case in point, I used to believe there were protocols in place to prevent the taking of property without due process from homeless people, but it seems like the Los Angeles Police Department has gone off the reservation, had to be taken to federal court by the National Lawyers Guild. On the Right to Share Food front, I have a copy for each of you of our own Catholic Worker, Los Angeles Catholic Worker's paper, The Agitator. On the cover is a mural. It's a picture of Jesus. The title is "Jesus Was a Street Server." Down below, "Jesus Was a Homeless Enabler." This is not right. Again, this morning, the president looked really good, talking about the debt ceiling. I have a suggestion that we raise the rate on capital gains over $1 million. I don't think those radical Republicans can argue with that. And again, I'd like to congratulate Congresswoman-elect Han in her victory. Thank you very much, and good morning to you.
Thank you very much, Michael. Our last speaker is in... Our last speaker is in San Pedro. If we can go out to our remote facility there. And very good morning, Stephanie.
Good morning, everyone. It's always a pleasure to greet you. I would have been there in person, but it wasn't advantageous. And thanks, another kudo for Councilwoman Hahn. We have our remote room here still operating. Perry Viganis does a great job down here. And I want to thank all of you for your service, as always. I have a couple of comments. First, I'm pleased to inform you, I don't think the letters arrived to you yet, that Jacob Haake, the new Chief of Staff to Dr. Richard Vladovic, informed me last week that the L.A. USD has approved the Victory Arch that my grandfather put up in 1937 to become historic cultural monument status, as per the motion Councilwoman Hahn introduced that you all, thank you so much, supported. Secondly, I am for what Councilwoman Hahn suggested or made a motion about removing parking meters in downtown San Pedro. I believe that it has been a blight on a very struggling business district, and not just for shoppers and diners, but I'm going over the DWP later. It's hard to find a place to park, you don't put enough quarters in, and you don't mean not to, but you're there waiting in the queue. So, I think that we deserve that, and I hope that you will support that. Third, I too offer kudos and congratulations to my friend and the esteemed councilwoman who has served this community and along with all of you with such faith and dedication. She has just been outstanding. It's going to be a tough act to follow, as they say, but she started some wonderful things. I know whoever comes into that job, they'll definitely have some attractive shoes to feel, and they will continue the good work that supports San Pedro as part of this great city of Los Angeles. I thank you so much again. I'm sure I'll be back before you in months to come. And I'm just glad I could be here today and only have a five-minute drive as opposed to a 30-minute drive. So, keep up the good work, everybody, and please come and see us. We have concerts by the sea, we have the beautiful fountain. San Pedro is the place to be in the summer, if you're not out at other beaches.
Yes, Mr. LeBlanc. Can I just say hello to Stephanie there?
Absolutely, you may.
In San Pedro, you said great words, especially about the councilwoman of the district, but count on all of us to help you in anything that you have here, and the 15th district staff. You do a great job with the San Pedro Film Festival. You're wonderful. Say hello to Peter Reed Miller and all the gang down there.
Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. And did you want to say anything, Ms. Hahn? Go ahead, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I just wanted to also thank my friend Stephanie Mardesic for all your job and with the film festival down there. And thanks for those kind words. And I know that my colleagues are going to make sure that they do not forget what's going down in San Pedro every single day. So, thanks. Thank you, Stephanie.
And we'll hear more about, and I hope from Ms. Hahn, a little bit later. Thank you so much. That'll close our general public comment. We have requested to take item 15 out of order, which is the special meeting, which means going into the special meeting and staying there till it's done. If there's no objection, would you please call the roll for the special meeting?
Elekron Cardenas, Englander Hahn, Weesar Coretts, Krikorian LeBlanc, Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosendo Weston, Zion Garcetti, 12 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Item number 15 is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Okay. And there's an amending motion. Has that been circulated yet? Or is... Okay, it's not been, okay. I'll recognize the chair of our Energy and Environment Committee. We do have public speaker cards as well on that.
Yep. Perhaps it would be better if we, let me say a few words first, and Mr. Nichols speak, and then...
I think the city attorney is advising we should wait till the motion is circulated, since the comments would be on the motion, the 15A, so that folks could comment on 15A if they want to. So, why don't you make some opening comments?
Can I do a few opening comments?
Yeah, of course. So, I'll recognize you for that.
About, you have a motion here before you, colleagues. And I wanted to give you a little background. In May of 2010, the State Water Resources Control Board adopted a statewide, once-through cooling policy for power plants. Now, this policy requires operators of power plants must minimize and eventually eliminate its use of once-through cooling in order to reduce environmental impacts. OTC, or once-through cooling, utilizes marine water to cool power plant turbines as they generate electricity. It is then discharged to the ocean. You have representatives here today also from the Department of Water and Power, Mr. Ron Nichols, who I hope will come to the middle of the table. And we have tried to reach out to various stakeholders, including the National Resources Defense Council. Now, NRDC expressed concerns regarding these impacts to the, in our Energy and Environment Committee meeting and the Board of Water and Power Commissioners, particularly with respect to DWP's alternative OTC compliance plan. Now, on Tuesday, Energy and Environment met and held a lengthy discussion on OTC and its impacts. So, today, we're going to discuss the issues that resulted there, too, on marine environment, fish habitats, efficient and clean reliability to keep the lights on, and the impact that overall costs through making a decision on once-through cooling can have on the ratepayer and on the utility itself. Now, early estimates from the Chief Legislative Analyst Office on the cost of a 2020 compliance requirement put the cost at $649 million, which will result in additional power rate increases. On July 19, the State Water Resources Control Board will be considering an amendment that would extend the compliance period for once-through cooling. Now, currently, the NRDC supports the Water Board's original compliance date of 2020. The department, I believe, will state that they cannot physically repower several plants and ensure reliability, as these plants make up 40% of our DWP baseload. Now, DWP originally asked for a 2040 compliance date, but then readjusted the date to 2035 as a way of meeting, meeting folks halfway. Now, the State Water Resources Control Board has asked for the city's position, and we will set that forth today. But again, my concern is on not only balancing the interests of the environment, but the reality of impacts to the taxpayer. And so, I asked the Chief Legislative Analyst to do an amending motion that will establish the city position supporting the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power's proposed amendments to the water quality control policy on the use of coastal waters for power plant cooling, scheduled to be considered on July 19 at the State Water Resources Control Board meeting. And that consists of eliminating OTC at Haynes Harbor Scattergood Power Plants through 2035. I also urge the State Water Resources Control Board to include a re-opener clause that would revisit this issue five years from the adoption date. The purpose of the re-opener will ensure that we have a review and a look at repowering, the repowering implementation schedule, and the best available technologies, and update the status of the marine habitat to determine whether we can expedite the schedule in the future. So, with that, okay, well, with that, Mr. Nichols, if you would tell us where we are to date, and...
Thank you, Councilmember Perry. The department has been working on this, on this issue. The whole issue of, of the elimination, or at least elimination of the effects, if not total elimination, of once-through ocean cooling has been a national issue for about seven years. The State Water Resources Control Board brought this issue up about four years. We've been working intensively with them for, for over four years to develop a plan. We have spent millions of dollars in studies and looking at our alternative ways. We have a plan that, that was compliance by 2040. When I came on board, I worked with staff to evaluate how we could reduce that. We think 2035 is a plan that we can make work. And we work, work forward to maintain what we believe is a, is a strong balance between maintaining the first and foremost priority, and that's reliability of power supply to the city of Los Angeles customers. And at the same time, meeting the requirements of getting our most intensive use of ocean cooling eliminated, totally eliminated first. And when we're done with this plan, we will have zero use of ocean cooling whatsoever. We will convert all of it to dry cooling. So, we've worked through that plan. We believe we have support, we have actually on record support from the staff, the State Water Resource Control Board on that plan. As Councilmember Perry indicated, and as we testified before her committee recently, there's not, there is no physical way we can meet a 2020 plan right now with technologies that are out there. And as a result, we've laid out a plan that, that does it physically as quickly as we believe we can with current technologies now. To the extent that new technologies come up that might allow us to move more, forward more quickly, we are happy to continue to evaluate that, and would plan to continue to evaluate that. And as, as we testified before, Energy and Environment previously, the, the cost to, if it were physically possible, which is not, the cost to achieve 2020 would add another, about 6% to our rates by 2019. Between 2015 and 2019, we would add another 6% on top of all other costs they're seeing. And as I think all of us know, with some of the discussions that we've had going out in, in the public in the last few weeks with respect to our current rate considerations, adding on top of that, at a time when we're ramping up also on, on renewable energy and other, other costs, just comes at the, unfortunately, I'm sure it's not intentional, intentional by the State Water Board, but it ends up coming at the worst possible time. So, we, we believe the plan is solid. We're open to the concept of having a, a re-opener, five years out, to assess, number one, how we've done on the plants that we're already converting, and then what technologies look like for alternatives that may not exist today that might allow us to move more quickly on a basis that works. So, I think with that, I'm happy to take any questions that, that councilmembers might have.
Thank you. We have Councilmember Cardenas next, and then Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nichols and all of your staff that has been working on this. Overall, is this an energy efficiency matter, or is this mainly an environmental, addressing an environmental impact issue?
This is addressing an environmental impact issue. That's, that's, that's the drive of that. Now, as a, in the course of repowering these plants, since you, you can't, you can't change a cooling water source from ocean to dry cooling and still use the same plant the same way, so it, it requires a repowering? That is a replacement of those plants?
Yeah, but, but at the root of this, it is, it's an environmental mitigation matter.
Absolutely.
And that environmental mitigation matter comes from our own internal decision, or is it something that is required of facilities like this throughout the state of California?
This is a mandate that's coming down from the State Water Resource Control Board that applies to all non-nuclear coastal power plants.
And the plan that we're talking about today, that is before us, that's a plan that actually meets the requirements and the standards that the state of California is requiring of us?
Well, that's, and that's the point that will be voted on by the State Water Resource Control Board next week.
But as far as we can, as far as we can tell right now, until they actually approve our plan, it appears that we are within the timeline that they require of us, and we are moving forward in a way as best as we can understand, until they actually officially approve it. As best as we can see, we are in fact in line with our requirements.
Well, as a, as a clear point, Councilwoman Cardenas, they are, the, the current, the current policy of the Board, State Water Resource Control Board, is, is to achieve by, by 2020.
Correct.
And they, and they will then, they're then looking at, at amending that to, to meet our requirements. If they, if they make that amendment, then yes, we are meeting all their requirements.
Okay. So, basically, the overall scope of what our proposal is and our current, our plan for the Department of Water and Power in this matter, as best we can tell, we should be okay with the state. And I'm using my words carefully. I'm not saying that, that we know for sure, but it looks as though right now, we should be okay, but we have yet to, to see what their decision is, correct?
I think that's a par characterization, yes.
Exactly. I'm not trying to get you to oversubscribe or to overcommit to this body. But one of the things that is very important to all of us is, this is a requirement, we're doing what, we're going to do what we can to create a plan in order for us to comply. I have two questions for you. The first one is, can we do so with all honesty and make these changes without affecting the power rates to our customers?
Uh, no.
Okay. My second question is this, if, if we approve this plan that appears to be across approximately 10 years or so, correct? Within 10 years or less?
No, the, no, the approved plan will, will go between, between now and 2035.
2035, okay. My point is this, is there anything that precludes us from adjusting that plan and making it shorter as time goes on?
No, we can, we will periodically be updating it, and under, under the terms of the, of the recommended motion, we would specifically be taking a, a forthright look at it five years out, based on, based on where we are and based on what technology is done between now and then.
So, and my last point is, so basically, what we have before us is not a stagnant plan that's etched in stone, that we cannot improve upon as time goes on. You mentioned technologies change and things of that matter. Hopefully, when technology changes, actually, the price points get better for our customers as well. With those things changing, we do have the internal flexibility to go ahead and improve upon this plan, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, and thank you, Ron Nichols, for, for being our general manager. I've had nothing but a positive interaction with you and my constituents and you on a whole multitude of issues, and I want to thank you publicly for that kind of leadership. Ms. Perry's motion gives us a five-year review, correct?
Correct.
Which allows us to take a deep breath and look at where we are in five years.
Yes.
In the meantime, have you had any major environmental groups like Hill the Bay and others come and act you over this, or do they appreciate the reality that you're dealing with?
Well, we've had a lot of interaction with environmental groups, Hill the Bay and others, and extensive discussions on this issue over, you know, several years, actually.
Right. And you're comfortable that they can appreciate the direction you're going and how you're going about it in light of, of how we are challenged by this issue?
I, I would hope that they do.
Good, good, good. You mentioned sort of on the side there renewables, and of course, there was a story in this morning's paper that we're kicking back up that whole process of solar.
Right.
If we could just take this as a moment to discuss renewable for a second.
Sure.
A lot of people are excited.
Right, well, we are. Of course, we are. We achieved our, our 20% last year, and we're on a path that's built into all of our paths to meet the 33%. And we, we kicked off a series of workshops just yesterday.
Yes.
To, to your, to your point, on re-establishing our solar, not only our solar incentive program, but also getting comments so that we can move forward this fall with a, with what we call a fee-in tariff program. So, we would have two local solar programs that would increase the use of solar energy, not just for L.A., but here physically in L.A. on the rooftops of our, of our residential and business customers.
I'm very excited about the fee-in tariff concept. Just quickly tell people what that means.
Well, a fee-in tariff is where you take photovoltaic plant units arrays and put them on the roofs of businesses, governmental facilities, and on, and on houses. And in the same, physically in the same manner that we have with our, with our solar incentive program. But the difference there is they are just basically like a, a set of many distributed power plants that we enter into long-term power contracts to take 100% of the output of that into our grid, and that displaces other energy the way we had other use. So, we'll enter into a long-term contract with every party that installs those within, within our program, pay them an agreed-upon price for that period of time.
Yeah, I think it's very exciting, and that takes that whole energy concept away from coal and all of these other issues that are obviously how we have to have our power these days, but the more solar we go, the better off we are.
It's a, it's a serious arrow in our resource quiver to get it off coal, yes.
Right. Thank you very much.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Thank you very much. And following Mr. Rosendahl, anyway, thank you every day. Thank you for the power that you bring to Los Angeles and the water. I was extremely disappointed that some publication used the word hate as it related to the Department of Water and Power or any agency. That's a horrible word. They could dislike, they could say it has some other thing, but hate is a bad word. I love water and power for the work that it does for the people of Los Angeles, and we have to work better to do it better. We all agree on that. But I think that's horrible that whoever said that in a publication or ever says it, I don't like that. That being said, Mr. Rosendahl talked about the fee tariff thing. What I'd like you to work on first is help the parks and libraries stay open. libraries stay open by putting solar on the big gyms and the big libraries, and work that out. Let's take care of the people first so we can expand the hours and solve those other problems that smaller utilities have been able to solve. Because our obligation to be serve the people, and we will play catch-up. I know you got a big focus on that, but I just wanted to speak for the parks, the art centers, the libraries on this issue. On the issue that relates to the water, has it come through? Just explain just a little bit more. That has been resolved? Is it resolved? How do your water people feel about that?
You're talking about with respect to the once-through cooling?
For the cooling.
Right. Well, on the cooling side, our water people are not really affected by it because we are, number one, we're presently using ocean cooling, and we are, we've made the affirmative plan. In no way are we going to shift to using any other water when we convert these plants off of ocean cooling. They're gonna be done with dry cooling, and the reason being is that we don't want, number one, we don't want to use any potable water for purposes of cooling. And to the, I know there've been a number of people that said, well, why don't you use recycled water? There's only a limited amount of recyclable water available. If you took all of the water, all of the water, out of the Hyperion power plant right now and treated that to use in just the scatter good plant alone, it's not enough to meet the requirements. Furthermore, we want to use, we want to use more of the Hyperion water treated for purposes of meeting industrial requirements so it displaces our use of potable water. So, anywhere that we want to use recycled water, we want to use that to displace potable water so we have, can start backing off on our imported water that meets our water requirements for our customers.
You're more of a power man than a water man, right?
Well, I've done both my whole career.
Explain to me, what is a terminal lake? A terminal lake is a lake that water goes in and doesn't leave?
That's right. A terminal lake, which Owens Lake is a terminal lake, is a lake where a river flows into it, drainage drains into it, and there's no outlet.
And then that water dies there?
The water turns to salt.
Exactly. Okay, like the Salt and Sea down there.
Yeah, Salt and Sea is another terminal lake.
So, all right. And also, is anybody else on the queue?
Yes, and so are you a little over?
How many more?
There are two more.
Two more. I want to say something later. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Nichols, you talked earlier about the statewide impact of these water quality regulations. Is it true that the investor-owned utilities have been treated in a different way than what is being proposed, what is mandated upon DWP right now?
Well, the investor-owned utilities are in a bit of a different situation. Number one, as it pertains to the two nuclear power plants that are owned by the investor-owned utilities, that's Diablo Canyon and San Onofre, they presently don't have to comply. So, they have a waiver, they have a buy on that at this juncture. Most of those, the other investor-owned utilities do not own any significant coastal gas-fired power plants. They sold, as they divested those as part of the major restructuring of the California utility business in the late 1990s. And so, they are, there's only a couple that are still affected, that are owned by them. And furthermore, we're up first. The department has been put up ahead of everybody else to address this issue and move through the board's process.
And on the nuclear point, do you know, as you sit here, what percentage of the statewide load is generated by nuclear power plants?
On the order of...
It's about 10 to 15%.
And those are exempted entirely from this requirement?
At present, they are totally exempt. About 12 to 13%, as I recall, today.
In response to Mr. Cardenas' questions, you talked about rate impacts. Can you quantify a little bit what the rate impacts would be, or what the average bill impact would be if we maintained a current compliance schedule of 2020? And, Mr. President, I'm just gonna need another minute if I could.
If we had to comply by 2020, the increment just above and beyond our 2035 plan adds another 6% average to our total rates by 2019. And so, that would be on the order of about another $4 a month to a 500-kilowatt-hour per month customer, or if you're more like a Valley customer, it would be 1,500 kilowatt-hours a month. That would be more like about $12 a month.
All right. And if the 2020 deadline is not modified, and for whatever reason, DWP is not able to comply with that 2020 deadline, do you know what the ramifications of that failure to comply with those deadlines would be?
Well, first, I mean, answer that. At present, we don't know any physical way that we could.
And that's why I asked the question.
Right. And still keep the lights on in a reliable fashion that we're accustomed to today. If we didn't, if we were still irrespective of that fact, still mandated to do so, I honestly don't know what the consequences are. I mean, we can't physically do something that we can't, so we would find ourselves in a difficult, in an impossible compliance situation with today's technologies.
It could be civil and potentially criminal penalties, including civil penalties in the billions of dollars, could it not?
Well, I guess it depends. I'm not a lawyer, councilmembers. I'm not certain, but it definitely would be penalties against, if it was deemed that we were willfully not undertaking a regulatory mandate at the state level.
All right. Now, and just to wrap up those two fiscal points, there was discussion earlier, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Labange talked about feed-in tariffs, talked about energy efficiency, talked about our commitment to renewable energy and some of the other environmental goals that the department has, many of which involve the expediting of getting off coal, complying with our global warming impacts under AB 64 and otherwise. I'm sorry, that was my, AB 32 and otherwise. If we have a limited ability to continue to generate revenues to pay for that, does a 2020 compliance date for once-through cooling impact on our ability to meet those other environmental goals?
Well, it's coming on, and it just happens to be piling on at the same time when we're meeting all of those other goals. There are costs associated with meeting those other goals, and to the extent that we have limited rate revenue to do that, then we're now finding a competing circumstance between meeting renewable energy, enhancing our energy efficiency, getting off of coal, and meeting once-through cooling requirements, all at the same time, which is a coincidence of time that just makes it financially extraordinarily difficult, even if it were physically possible to achieve that. And I might add also that one of the issues, in addition to simply not being able to move quickly enough to keep these plants all online, you know, keep a plant online at the same time to maintain reliability as we replace them for once-through cooling, we also have the challenge that no utility has gone through at 33% renewable energy, and so there's not a solid game plan as to what are all the things that we need to do to change our operations. So, to also be making those changes, which we are going to do, and at the same time be taking out major parts of our existing critical in-basin power plants, just makes that challenge even more difficult, even if we're physically possible to do it.
And so, on that point, the motion that Ms. Perry and Mr. Kretz and I are presenting today to amend, that provides a five-year window, and during that five years, you will continue to be reassessing the allocation of resources that are necessary to comply with those various environmental goals, and whether we have the ability to expedite the repowering of these plants in a way that might not be anticipated under the current alternative plan.
Yes, it does. And it also allows, to the extent that there are, if there were new technologies that were available that would allow us to, in an environmentally acceptable way, use ocean cooling for the plants that we had not yet converted, and include the need for that, which at present, our view, there isn't. That's why we're saying we have to repower and get off of it altogether. If there were opportunity to do that, then we would know that by then and could adjust that, and that could potentially allow us to expedite it more quickly.
Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I wanted to wrap up my comments by acknowledging that, I was reminded by the CLA that, I guess Heal the Bay had reached an agreement with the mayor's office either this year or within the last six months.
Last year.
Last year. They were willing to go to 2040, and I know that that does not, that does not jive with what NRDC and the Santa Monica Baykeepers would like. I want to acknowledge the fact that I know that they are not pleased with today's outcome, and I don't want to put words in their mouth because I know they're gonna come up and speak. But I also want to note that I was concerned about them having input, because I think that their viewpoint is important, which is why I wanted this reopener language in here. And I also want to add that they will be included and at the table in the further discussions with the CLA, the CAO, and applicable departments as stakeholders in this process to work with us to develop this marine restoration plan that should mitigate any impacts of once-through cooling, along with the city of Los Angeles coastal region. And I'm gonna ask, even though this is a hard deadline, but I think this is an area that we can give, and hopefully they'll work with us to come back in 60 days to do this. Because I think it's important to keep this in the forefront of moving forward together, and where we can reach an agreement and where we can have some consensus, and where we can include their input, I think we ought to seize that opportunity. We have to green our power system. We have to acknowledge the importance of the ratepayers, and we have to understand how to balance environmental concerns along with ratepayer concerns. So, I just want to say that publicly and to acknowledge their discontent, and to understand where it comes from, and that we will include them moving forward.
Final speaker is Mr. Labange for a second time.
Since you're here and you have no other items here today, I just wanted to mention for the council, yesterday, we laid to rest Catherine Mulholland, and you were represented by Jim McDaniels, and there's a wonderful service for her out in the Chatsworth Cemetery out there next to the old Chatsworth Reservoir. She was a beautiful woman. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now turn to our general public comment on this. Arnold Sacks is our first speaker. After Mr. Sacks will be Liz Crosson.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Very interesting commentary. Mr. Nichols, you mentioned that the investor-owned utilities that might be affected by this legislation no longer really exist because they sold all their plants, but those plants that are still operating would be affected by the legislation. So, how many plants would that be? There's two plants that you mentioned that would be affected by the legislation, costing $640 million. And you also mentioned that seven years ago, this was brought up by the federal government. DWP has been working on it for four years. What happens in the year like 2030 when you realize that you can't make the 2035 date? That's, according to this, would be seven years, would be 2003, would be like 25-year plan, maybe a 30-year plan out. In 30 years, how much coal, how many coal-fired plants do you expect to be operating for the DWP? The change in the source of energy from coal-fired to solar. Councilman Labange mentioned the parks and the schools getting solar. DWP is charging the parks and the libraries for their usage. It's mind-boggling. But the most important news, information was that investor-owned utilities, they're vesting themselves of that property. That's why we had the rate increase. Those plants, no longer owned by investor-owned utilities, owned by outside sources, how do they manage to serve, to process electricity and power when they don't own the power lines? Why are the citizens of the state of California paying high utility rates for outside utilities or utilities that are processed by outside ownership? Something doesn't make sense.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Liz Crosson. After that is David Pettit.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Liz Crosson. I'm the executive director for Santa Monica Baykeeper. I'm also a resident of the city of LA. I live in Council District 11 in Venice. So, I'm also a ratepayer. Thank you very much. I represent Santa Monica Baykeeper. We've been working on the OTC issue for several years, six years, but I will mention that this isn't an issue that's only been around for four, five, seven years. This is mandated by the Clean Water Act and has been for 30 years. I would also like to mention that I just got off the phone with Mark Gold from Heal the Bay, who I'm authorized to represent, who has never agreed to a 2035 or a 2040 deadline, and is extremely disappointed with this motion, as are we. We came to Councilmember Perry with this issue and the Energy and Environment Committee because we are really concerned about the impacts to Santa Monica Bay, the impacts to fish, and what this actually says about our city. DWP has a responsibility to its ratepayers to comply with the law, to do all that it can, but first of all, to provide us the information that we require to make a good decision. That's what's missing here. We're not saying 2020, they have to do it. We're saying, where's the information? We're hearing numbers about how much it's gonna cost. We've asked for an independent review of those numbers. I did a Public Records Act request for those numbers. I got six, no, I'm sorry, I got 10 pieces of paper for a Public Records Act request on how they substantiated these numbers of how much it's gonna cost to comply by 2020. We just want to know, where is the information? We want an independent review. I really appreciate the work that Councilmember Perry's office has done and the CLA, but this motion doesn't get us anywhere. We already have a five-year review. Their NPDS permit has to be renewed every five years. We'll look at it then. This doesn't get us anywhere. What we really need is more information, and DWP owes that to you. It owes that to the mayor's office, and it definitely owes it to the ratepayers. Thank you.
Thank you, David Pettit. As our next speaker. After that will be Connor Evans.
Thank you. And before I attend to this matter, I want to congratulate Councilmember Hahn for her election to Congress. It's a great, thank you. I want to congratulate Councilmember Hahn for her election to Congress. It's a great thing for this country. And now for the bad stuff. I'm concerned that the council is being stampeded into action by fear of rate hikes that may not be justified. The numbers that we heard today, 6% rate increase by 2020, we've been asking, as Ms. Crosson said, we've been asking for the backup data for this for months. We've gotten nothing. The only thing I've seen is a spreadsheet that I got not from DWP, but from a very prominent local reporter that purports to justify these rate increases. The reporter and I, we could not make sense of it. We could not even tell how the numbers flowed on the spreadsheet. And I'm very confident in saying that you folks don't know either where this number comes from. And if you remember the ECAF debacle of last year, let's not do that again. Let's not be stampeded into something when we don't have the background data for it. Secondly, on the lights are gonna go out issue, the motion that DWP has in front of the State Water Board, which is for more time to do what they've been ordered to do, one of the reasons they put forward is system reliability. In other words, the lights are going to go out. There's an interagency board that was put together, has this weird acronym, SACWIS, but the State Water Board asked a number of state agencies to look at DWP's proposal. And I just want to read one thing from the report. This is the SACWIS report, their conclusion that they gave to the State Water Board. They said, "System or local reliability concerns need to be demonstrated to justify a change in the compliance schedule." Basically, they say in a very polite way, LEDWP has not met its burden of saying that the lights are going to go out, that there are going to be reliability concerns if they don't get the extra time. So, what I asked the council to do is ask the state board, let's put this over until we get the data. we get the data that, in my opinion, you folks need to understand, are we talking about big rate increases or not? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Connor Evans is our next speaker, and then after that is Doug Arsenault.
Connor Evans, Southern California Watershed Alliance, and I grew up in Los Angeles, fishing on the piers. I also got to work with Dorothy Green, if we're going to evoke Heal the Bay. She was the founder of Heal the Bay, and she would say what happens here and what we're talking about is the life force of the ocean, the fish eggs, fish larvae, and plankton that are killed by the ton called biofouling and dumped back out in the ocean. The end result is, we have essentially a dying sea out there, and it's more and more polluted despite the efforts of many environmental groups. I have a mother in the San Fernando Valley with an $8,000 water bill because we installed, as the council had allowed and DWP allowed, a separate landscape meter, which would allow us to subtract the difference. In the valley, you can use as much as 70% water in the outdoors. That still hasn't been read properly by DWP. And my brother, who's as wide as I am tall, has been stubbornly holding on to that bill. We've just sold my stepfather's barn back east to take care of it. That's just an example. On one level, I support the rate increases despite that, so we do more on water conservation reclamation. On the other side, we have this battle we're having over this issue, which is nothing new. This is federal compliance, it's been over for 30 years. While we ignore it and we delay, as LA has in the past with Hyperion, we get to a point where now we're supposed to comply with a compromise with the state, and we're moving backwards. We are offended by this. We don't know quite what to do. We want to move forward with the good things. If you reduce energy, increase efficiency, reduce demand, then you're reducing the demand on the cooling at the same time, and private entities like NRG and El Segundo have seen the writing on the wall and have moved in that direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Doug Arsenault is our next speaker. After that is Dr. Clyde Williams.
Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Doug Arsenault, Legislative Affairs Manager for the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. ViCA represents more than 360 businesses in the city of Los Angeles and surrounding areas. ViCA strongly supports the efforts of LEDWP to comply with the Water Board's OTC policy and member this responsible vote to the environment and to its ratepayers. The current timeframe set forth by the State Water Board will guarantee rate shock for the residents and businesses of Los Angeles. LEDWP's alternative plan, however, will allow for implementation of the most advanced OTC technology without these massive rate hikes. Furthermore, it will set the stage for fulfillment of LEDWP's pledge to be the first utility in the state, the first to eliminate the use of ocean water in its cooling. ViCA urges the council to support the implementation schedule that LEDWP will put forth to the Water Resource Control Board next week. When constituents receive reliable and low-cost utility service, Los Angeles becomes an economically stable city for its businesses, their employees, and their customers. Thank you.
Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker. After that is Jessica Duboff.
Good morning. Dr. Clyde Williams, El Cerrano, LA 32 Neighborhood Council, DWP liaison. It's interesting how charts can provide an indication of policy. Charts provided in the staff report and backup for this indicates that efficiency isn't going to get much effort, isn't going to get much money throughout the next 20 years. Seems a little bit strange. So we're quite concerned about that, as to why efficiency is given such a short shrift and something called gas drilling is brought in. Even DWP's website doesn't find gas drilling. So we're quite concerned about what that is because it seems related to getting off coal and also repowering these plants. Oh, repowering. What will be the generating capacity of the rebuilt, repowered facilities compared to their existing? Seems strange that that's not an issue. Maybe that's related to getting off coal. N-basin generation would be an alternative to getting off coal and getting around renewables. So we don't know where renewables are in relationship to this gas plant repowering. Myself, I would stand a doubling of my electric rates. No problem. I only consume 5 kilowatt-hours per day, so doubling that to 10, wow! That's not much in the way of money because this is our ocean. We discharge a lot of stuff to our ocean, sewage and cooling water. So I'm quite concerned and would support 2020 rather than 2035.
Thank you. Jessica Duboff is our next speaker, and then Carol Schatz.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Duboff. I'm here on behalf of the Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce. Los Angeles businesses are seeking a reasonable solution to the regulation of once-through-cooling water usage at coastal power plants. The chamber has been following this issue since May of last year, when the State Water Resources Board released a compliance schedule that would force the DWP to eliminate OTC usage by accelerating implementation of its current repowering program. Accelerating that schedule to meet a 2020 deadline carries a price tag of hundreds of millions, possibly billions of dollars, translating into approximately 6% rate hike. To date, the department has invested $600 million on two projects to upgrade OTC units and has a budgeted schedule for the remainder. That current schedule is factored into the extensive public outreach process the department is currently undertaking to inform ratepayers of the priorities and choices we must make as a city to decide how we envision our water and power future. Condensing the timetable for upgrades not only hurts ratepayers' pocketbooks, it also threatens the reliability and redundancy necessary to safely maintain utility service, all while leaving few resources for other costs, including renewable initiatives. In this tough economic climate, neither businesses nor residents can afford needlessly higher utility bills when a viable alternative exists that can achieve the stated environmental goals. As such, the chamber urges the council to support Councilmember Perry's motion today and support the DWP's implementation schedule put forward to the State Water Resources Board up for consideration this Tuesday. Many costs are unavoidable. This is one decision where we can balance environmental protection with economic and public safety considerations. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Schatz is the next speaker.
Carol Schatz, president of the Central City Association and the Downtown Center BID. The alleged environmental benefits of the state mandate are far outweighed by the cost of it to the DWP and the commercial ratepayers that are picking up the bill of this mandate. Environmentalists have no skin in the game. They are not on the financial hook for what we consider to be an environmental excess. Property owners in both CCA and the BID, the biggest in LA, are reeling from the proposed rate hikes that DWP has proposed that don't even include the onerous and additional expense of OTC. A 16.8% power rate increase and a 15.3% water rate increase over and above the existing utility tax and city transfer of 12.5%. And OTC puts 6% on top of that. What does that translate to for one of our largest property owners here in downtown Los Angeles? 2.5 million square feet? This means an annual power rate increase of between $1.1 and $1.5 million a year. So you have some numbers. If you do not support the DWP's alternative plan, and by the way, as the group that led the opposition to the power rate increase a year ago, I want to state categorically that we have confidence in Mr. Nichols and what he's doing with his department. So we urge you to support the DWP's implementation plan and support Councilmember Perry's motion and urge you to always consider a very balanced approach to any potential change in the implementation plan that the DWP is suggesting in terms of its impact on the people who are paying the freight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The other final speaker for general public comment, and now back to Councilmember Carritz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a reasonable middle ground on this issue. I'm concerned that we're taking as long as a date of 2035, and I care a lot about the environment. I've been the executive director of a couple environmental organizations over the years, but I think this is a reasonable compromise as a regulatory requirement. I don't think this gets us off the hook in terms of time, and I don't think we're saying, hey, we agree this is going to be done by 2035. I think we do want to say for the record that I, for one, I'm sure many, if not all of my colleagues would like to see it done earlier, this motion does not stop that from happening. It keeps us from getting in regulatory hot water if we don't get it done by 2035. But I think when we revisit this five years from now, especially when hopefully our economy has approved and we can look at this from a fiscal standpoint and we have a better sense of how quickly these activities can take place, I think we should be pushing for an earlier finish time than 2035. I certainly will be pushing for that when we review this in five years. But at the same time, I think 2020 is probably not realistic. I don't know that our economy can handle it, and from just a practical standpoint, it's questionable at best that we could physically get this done by 2020. So I think this is a reasonable compromise. I hope at the end of the day, this gets done a lot more quickly than 2035. I certainly expect it to get done, hopefully in the next 10 years while I'm here. I think that would be a reasonable earliest goal. Maybe it takes 15 years, but I think we should acknowledge as we pass this that we want to push to get this done as quickly as possible. We just don't want to miss 2020 and have a lot of regulatory headaches, but I don't think in any way we're letting DWP off the hook for doing this expeditiously. And I have to say, I have a considerable amount of confidence in our DWP general manager. I think things are being done in greater and greater transparency, and that also gives me some confidence in voting for this measure.
Mr. Corrigan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur entirely with Mr. Carritz. I would like to see this expedited, too. I think we need to continue to work over the course of the next five years to figure out a strategy to try to expedite this alternative proposal, but at the same time, I have significant impacts about how a 2020 compliance date, I have significant concerns about the impacts of a 2020 compliance date on our other environmental goals, particularly energy efficiency, particularly our conversion to renewable energy and reduction of use of coal. So I'm going to stand in support of the motion that's before us today. But at the same time, Mr. Nichols, and I also agree with Mr. Chris, that it's been a dramatic and refreshing change in recent months, as we've noticed your commitment to trying to provide more and more information to the public, particularly about the proposed policy choices that we have to make and their impacts on rates over the coming years. On this particular issue, I think that the comments that were offered by some of the members of the public from the environmental community about demonstrating the information that justifies these cost projections for OTC are quite reasonable, and I think that we do need to try to make those as public as possible, and I think Ms. Perry is going to speak to that in a moment. But I would just like to emphasize that that is very important to me, having that component readily available to the public so that everyone can see not only the costs of OTC compliance, but what impact that has on the various policy choices that we would want to make in the interest of environmental protection and sustainability. So with that, I'm going to stand in support of this, but I would like to emphasize how important it is to me that we get that information out to the public.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Thanks very much, Mr. President. Again, I want to do this verbal motion, and I think Mr. Corrigan will second, to ask the Department of Water and Power to report back in 15 days on the following issues that were raised by representatives from the environmental organizations, and particularly Mr. Pettit's comments, the basis of the claimed 6% rate adjustment to the ratepayer associated with the 2020 once-through-cooling compliance plan, the basis of the power plant reliability, power plant system reliability, concerns associated with the 2010 once-through-cooling compliance plan, and the basis for the, and I don't want to editorialize, but the infeasible claim from the department, this is a quote, that the department comply with the 2020 OTC compliance plan. So if I could get a second on that, and I have a second for Mr. Corrigan, and we'll schedule that in committee so that we can have an on-the-record conversation with the stakeholders who are here today, and that includes everybody, and have the department make the response to the organizations who felt that the response was deficient on the record. And I'll make that a single-item agenda so we can spend the entire hour on that. Okay? Thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard on this item? We do have before us the motion, the amending motion first. Is there an objection to the amending motion? If not, that'll be amended in, and now we can take a vote on this item as amended. Please open the roll. Sorry. The amendment is 5A, that's before us. It's to move to the 2035 schedule. Do you want to vote on the amendment first? Okay. All right. Please open the roll. Please close the roll. Please keep the roll open. Let's go ahead and refresh the roll. Okay, let's try it again. Please open the roll. Okay, now vote, everybody? Now try it? Miss Hahn is not. Okay. Is there anybody else that wants to be recorded as a no? Okay. Miss Hahn will be recorded then as a no on that. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 1 no.
Okay. That is approved. If we can adjourn this special meeting and go into the regular meeting next, and let's see, we'll go to item number two, called special by Mr. Parks.
Mr. Garcetti, can we have two and 10 together?
Sure, we'll take those two together.
And we have the CAO to come up at this time. Colleagues, one of these documents is the second reading of the ordinance, and also there's an operational plan that we're going to have an amending motion for, but I think it's important that Miguel explains to us what's before us. And Miguel, if you can take a moment and also explain how it ties into what we approved on Wednesday.
Certainly. Item number two is the second reading of the retiree healthcare freeze for our sworn personnel. As you know, as was discussed a few weeks ago, as it relates to the agreement with PPL, the freeze is a component of that. Through that agreement, sworn personnel will have the opportunity to opt-in and contribute 2% of their income towards vesting that benefit. Those who choose not to will have the existing benefit frozen at the current level, so they will not experience any future growth. So the second reading of the ordinance is the foundation of that strategy. We're currently in discussions with UFLAC. They have signed a letter agreement that concurs with the opportunity to adopt a similar kind of agreement with the city to allow their members to opt-in or not. Item number 10 is the operational plan for the police department that was directed by the committee as well as by your full council to identify savings for the anticipated shortfall. The department came up with approximately $4 million worth of savings. We assume those savings in the context of what was adopted on Wednesday pertaining to the overall pensions contribution as well as the restoration of budgets so that furloughs could be, in fact, eliminated for those bargaining units who agree. could be in fact eliminated for those bargaining units who agree.
Okay, Mr. Santana, could you explain to us what would occur if we don't approve this ordinance?
Well, if the ordinance is not adopted today, then obviously it creates a problem as it relates to the PPL agreement that you have already approved. The status of that is that we anticipate on August 1st, we will allow 45 days to have those police officers who agree to opt-in to opt-in. And once that is completed, we will know, we will conduct a new actuarial analysis that would establish what the savings are based on those who opt-in and those who choose to be frozen out. Should this ordinance not be approved, this second reading, it would undermine the foundation of that agreement.
Okay, with that agreement and the report that we approved on Wednesday, you in effect are using roughly $40 million of savings on healthcare to help fill a void in the police budget. And then on the report on Wednesday, you have used a variety of healthcare savings to fill voids throughout the city of L.A.
That is correct. The action that took place on Wednesday was to transfer what would have gone as a payment towards retiree healthcare to the pensions board, to keep it within the city and to use it to mitigate the shortfall in the budget for the police department. That number is likely to change. Once we know how many people opt-in, that study is completed, and we'll be coming back in the mid-year to address how to address, mitigate, or handle the outcome of that change.
And approximately how much dollars in your Wednesday's report addressed the furlough issue in order to get budgets back in order and get more people back to work? Was it something in the 70 to 80 million dollar range?
No. The original figure we provided you, should all sworn personnel be frozen for retiree healthcare, including those in drop, the total savings to the city would be $16 million this first fiscal year. That's a substantial savings based on actuarial analysis that was done. However, it's important to note that a number of factors have changed since that report. There's been additional members who have joined the drop program as a result of this action. We reached an agreement with PPL that allowed some to actually pay the 2% and some to choose to have their retiree healthcare frozen. So we won't know the actual savings until we complete our analysis.
Okay. Thank you very much. Colleagues, this report is dependent, or this ordinance is dependent on our approval so that we can move forward not only to ensure that the prior MOU is whole, but also the variety of recommendations that we approved last Wednesday go into effect. And I'd ask that we make an amendment in one regard, that we take both items two and 10 and tie them to our CF number from Wednesday, which is 11-0600-S104. And then that we amend the item 10, there's two recommendations on that report, that we add a third recommendation, and it basically should say that LAPD implement the $4 million in reduction in savings as identified in the CAO report as part of option C, and report on their status in future FSRs.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? We have one speaker card on 10, Arnold Sachs, if you'd like to come forward on item number 10. If anybody would like to open up the earlier hearing, there's already been a hearing, so it would require a motion from a council member to reopen that.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. It's really kind of amazing because on Wednesday you were all blowing your horns about how much savings was going to be made. And there was an article on Wednesday, just so happens, I didn't read it at the time, "L.A. Bond Rating Drops a Level." And in this article, halfway down, it said, "City Councilman Bernard Parks said that in light of these favorable rates, the Moody's downgrade came as a surprise." In the same article, two paragraphs down, City Administrative Officer Miguel Santana said that the firm's downgrade, speaking of Moody, brings it in line with other rating firms, including Fitch and Standard &amp; Poor, and was therefore not a shock. So how come you got one firm on one track in two different directions going with two leadership? Because you just heard from the Nutty Professor how it's prudent to carry through the CAO's report. We have shock and surprise, shock and not a surprise. Thank you very much. Who's on first, what's on second, I don't know, third base?
Thank you. Does anybody wish to reopen the public hearing on item two? Seeing no motion from the floor, we did have one speaker card on that, we'll enter that into the record. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. If we can go to items, I think, six and seven and eight together, those are all bids with cards from Mr. Sachs.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sachs. The reason I actually held all these property bids, five, six, seven, and eight, the first one, East Hollywood Business, is a property owner's bid. The Panorama City property is a business improvement property-based. The Sunset Vine is property-based, and Old Granada Business is business-based. The difference being, in addition, that some are business-based and some are property-based. And you need to be more upfront and open and transparent, as you'd like to say. Also, as part of the fiscal impact report, the number of city-owned properties is listed in each one of them except the East Hollywood Business District. There's five in the Panorama City, there's three in the Sunset Vine, and there's zero in the Old Granada Business. And that's important. I remember you talking about that, saying that the city will always vote in favor of business improvement districts because business improvement districts supersede the CRA's responsibility to meet the requirement to provide affordable housing honoring the blighted areas that are rehabilitated. You've got a business improvement district, takes over for CRA, no more affordable housing is necessary. But it's really important. Thank you. And I'd like to get in on those conversations too, but I'm at the podium, Mr. President.
Folks, if I can please ask people to keep their conversations to a minimum so we can listen to our public speakers. My apologies.
You have four groups listed here, the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, the Panorama City Business Improvement District Incorporated, the Central Hollywood Coalition, the Granada Hills Improvement Association, who are chosen to run these business improvement districts. The Hollywood Chamber of Commerce is a nonprofit. I just find it absolutely incredible to believe that. But I'd really like to know why some are property-based business improvement districts, and why some are business-based improvement districts, and how you can, how the Panorama City Property-Based Business Improvement District can modify a business improvement district if it's based on business.
Thank you. Our last speaker on these items is Kitty Gordillo, who has been very patient, and thank you for your patience on item number seven. Good afternoon now.
Hi, my name is Kitty Gordillo. I represent the Hollywood YMCA, and I'm a board member for the Sunset and Vine Business Improvement District. As a stakeholder, we greatly support the efforts and the services that the Sunset and Vine bid provides for us. We want to see the renaissance in Hollywood continue, and we see the bid as a key part in continuing that momentum. On a positive note, the property owners hit the 51% threshold in just two weeks. That demonstrates significant support for the bid in our district. And finally, we thank the city clerk staff for all their support and greatly appreciate your consideration today.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak briefly on item number seven as well, and just answer our previous, previous speakers, why are some property, why are some business? The simple answer is because the law is written that way and allows it, that this is a law essentially that allows people to tax themselves, just like there's street lighting districts and just like there's improvement districts for parks and other things. These are self-assessed districts, essentially a tax on oneself to supplement services. And I think Sunset and Vine is an incredible example again. We're seeing on Sunset Boulevard, though Hollywood Boulevard was the first of the great two boulevards to come back, Sunset Boulevard is really where it's at. Some very exciting news to announce in the next couple of weeks, two or three big projects that'll put a lot of people back to work and make things that are happening between the freeway and Vine Street even more dynamic. And so we look forward to announcing some exciting things shortly to come in a number of the vacant properties that are there. But really, this wouldn't be done, I think, as Kitty said, when 51% of businesses within two weeks hit that threshold, this is not easy work, to go to businesses, to convince them, to say, hey, do you want to pay more for something in this environment with this economy? But people know that this is worth the value that they get. The property values have gone up more in Hollywood than any other part of the state of California, I think outside of San Jose in terms of redevelopment areas, something like 574% in the last decade. Now, even though we've hit tougher times in the last couple of years, it's still a huge jump and a huge gain because the Business Improvement District, the Chamber of Commerce, the folks that have come forward from the community, the neighborhood councils have all combined to really revitalize Hollywood. And why that's important for the entire city, not just Hollywood, is when you see those tax receipts go up, those don't go to Hollywood, they go to our general fund, which makes sure that Hollywood, yes, has more police officers, but so do San Pedro and South LA, the San Fernando Valley and West LA and Boyle Heights. So thank you to Hollywood for continuing that. I urge your strong support on number seven.
Mr. Labonge.
Very quickly, Mr. Garcetti, thank you. Thank the bids. The absolute bids make a giant difference throughout our city, in Mr. Weston's district, the bids on Wilshire. It's an effort made to enhance the existing services that are there in a way that makes a real impact. So I just wanted to thank the bids specifically. Often when I, before I go hiking in Griffith Park, 5:36, I take a run through the district, and the sweepers are almost finished with all their work, turning it around, making it the welcome and place that it is. Hollywood, number one. Thank you.
That matter is now before us. Colleagues, for a vote, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Ms. Hahn for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're very happy today, and I saw you all leave and then come back. So I wanted to recognize that we have students here in our chambers called Helping Young People Excel Hype, who create a pipeline of leadership by placing low-income students from some of L.A.'s most challenged communities in top-tier private high schools in Los Angeles. And once placed, the students are academically and socially supported throughout their high school years in order to ensure success in college and beyond. Part of their job in this leadership training is to learn about their communities, their city, and that's why they're here today. They're actually here learning about what our city attorney does. They're here learning about the difference between the city attorney and the district attorney. This is a tough one. They're learning today how our city attorney, Nuch Tutanich, got to where he is and what he did to get where he is. When you find that out, we would like that information to be shared with the entire city of Los Angeles, and you're learning about what our city attorney's views are about how to make Los Angeles a better community to live in. Thank you for being here today at City Hall. We congratulate you on being chosen to be a part of this leadership program, and we wish you the most success in your lives. So thank you for visiting us today.
Thank you for that introduction. We do have items four and nine left. If we can take up number four, called special by Mr. Labonge.
Yeah, Mr. Parks.
Make that Mr. Parks.
Thank you. Colleagues, this is the implementation of our Measure L, and I'd like Chris to just explain to us as to what are the services that are going to come about because of Measure L, and I believe they start on Monday, and just give the community and council some idea of how this increase in revenue is going to impact services.
First of all, Chris Marita, Library Department. First of all, we'd like to thank-
Chris, bring that mic a little closer to you.
I'm sorry. First of all, we'd like to thank the entire city council, particularly the council members that spearheaded the campaign for Measure L, and that's Council President Eric Garcetti, Bernard Parks, Tom Labonge, and Councilwoman Jan Perry. Thank the mayor, the library supporters, the unions, and especially the Los Angeles voters for passing Measure L in March. Because of that, we are able to restore gradually over the next four years, we're able to restore library services to 2009, 2010 levels. The plan to restore those services over four years is first, in this current fiscal year, this new fiscal year, 2011, 2012, we're going to restore six-day service in all 73 libraries starting Monday. On Monday, we will restore Monday service in all 73 libraries. In year two, in 2012, 2013, we plan to restore two evenings a week at all 73 libraries. Right now, we're only open two evenings a week. We want to restore to four evenings a week. In 2013, 2014, we want to increase funding for our library materials, electronic resources, and technology upgrades. And in the last year of this four years, we want to restore seven-day service at Central Library and the eight regional libraries. Library management and the unions continue to participate in impact bargaining discussions regarding the restoration of services. And we hope that all of you and the public will join us on Monday at the Central Library. We'll have a press conference on Monday too, at 9:30 at Central Library to celebrate this incredible achievement, because it was one year ago today that we had to reduce service hours to go down to five days of service that we hadn't gone to in 140 years. So we hope the public will come out at 9:30 on Monday morning to join us.
Chris, can you give us just an idea of, with this one year of cuts, what kind of service, what type of loss of community contact with the library? How many, do you have any idea of how many people that we did not serve in the sense of the activity during this year downsizing?
Well, we probably had a decrease about 10% in our, the circulation of books and in our pedestrian traffic. And we know, I mean, every day we were asked to restore Monday service. So we're responding to the community. We have, you know, thousands of people, and I think on any given day, we have about 52,000 people visiting our 73 libraries, using our computers, using our after-school programs. And this is something that we're giving back to the community because they voted for it. So we're-
Thank you very much.
Mr. Labonge.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, thank you. In working with Mr. Parks as the Chair of the Finance Committee, Arts and Parks, over the course of time, this concept came forward. Mr. Parks, you shared it with Arts and Parks, we pulled it together. Mr. Garcetti, thank you. And Chris Marita, the pride of Wilson High, the pride of USC and UCLA, as the Assistant Librarian, Chief Librarian for Los Angeles, thank you. Martine Gomez, it's going to be a great day Monday, members, that we took a step, tightened our belts even more, but said libraries are important. Thank you. And I put a shout-out to the Kowiga Branch, which was my neighborhood library when I was a child, and Mike Mulligan and his steamship was my favorite. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Parks for holding forth on this measure, and, you know, his mantra over and over again was, libraries are a place of refuge for communities and one of the most significant community assets in areas such as the ones that we represent in South Los Angeles and can be transformative in people's lives. And even as he had to deal with other issues, he kept his eye very focused on the passage of this measure. And I, for one, want to express my appreciation for that because it not only benefits the constituents of the A, it benefits people on a citywide basis.
Thank you, and thank you, all three of you, for your great work on this, and very proud to have been part of the team and have gotten this done. Just so folks know, and I think it was explained, this is a three-year phase-in, so we will be able to restore Mondays this year, but we will be back to both in terms of service and strength of personnel to well above where we were before this even started over three years. But because the way it's phased in, in touch- three years, but because the way it's phased in, in tough economic times, it won't all happen the first year, but a good part of it is going to start on Monday, so we really look forward to that, and thank you to the Library Department for their good work on that. With that, let's go ahead and take a vote. Sorry, Mr. Sax, did you have a card on this? Come on forward.
It's against libraries. You have it, sir?
Go ahead.
Thank you. All right, two, I'm glad to hear about the libraries funded. Couple things, Councilman Labonge, you talked one time about getting some revenue from the convention center with advertising, maybe that could be a tie-in instead of the convention center with AEG, maybe something from the stadium, which is more permanent. And closing and opening the libraries, we heard about a source of revenue, but we didn't hear about a source of expense, so how much exactly will it cost to reopen the libraries, this money coming from the general fund, and where will that money come from? Because we heard often over and again with the budget discussions, if you take from one pot, you're going to have to take, you're going to have to eliminate, if you supply funds to one pot, you're going to have to eliminate funds from another pot. So where will these fundings come from? Because I believe the city council two years ago turned down an extra $30 million from the DWP in the discussion over the transfer funds. And again, let's talk about the transfer funds, because this year the DWP is transferring, oh wait, supposedly $258 million, except it's not all coming in this fiscal year, only $125 million is coming in this fiscal year. So $125 million or a little bit more is coming in the next fiscal year. So how is that being budgetary-wise with your funding, and where will the money come from? And again, on this agenda item with a three-year phase-in, I don't believe that was part of the measure that was presented to the voters. I believe the measure said funding to reopen the libraries, and that was the major portion and the focus of the message that was delivered by the city council. I don't believe there was a three-year funding portion, just like with the ratepayer advocate, all this song and dance routine that's going on there too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
I forgot to thank one person, the person that put the three-year funding plan in place, Karen, wanted to say thank you, and Sharon, and the CLA's office, so for those that didn't believe it was part of the plan, we have living proof that Karen created that as part of the charter amendment to give a three-year phase-in. So we want to thank her and the CLA for moving forward on that.
Thank you, Karen. With that, go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ayes.
And that is approved, if we can move six, seven, eight, and 15 forthwith, without objection, yes, Mr. Parks, and number 10 forthwith as well, we'll add to that. Our last item is item number nine, and we do have a card from the public on this, Dr. Clyde Williams. Is Dr. Williams here? I think he has left, we'll go ahead and submit that for the record. This will constitute Janice Hahn's last vote as a council member, it is non-controversial. But we can make it controversial because we are the Los Angeles City Council, so with that, let's go ahead and open the roll. On Councilwoman Hahn's last vote, keep it open for a long time so we can savor it. If you want to press the green button, you can, just for old time's sake. Yes, I think you're agreeing with the city attorney, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved.
Susan, Mr. President, Mr. Kim's salary has been set at $154,512.
Okay. It may be fitting, we'll send that forthwith as well, it may be fitting that Ms. Hahn's last vote was on a neighborhood council item, which she has been one of the foremothers of, for sure. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Folks, we are marking an occasion here today with Janice Hahn's election as Congresswoman, the newest Congresswoman in the United States of America. She was elected and will, and will represent this entire country, this state, our city, and the district incredibly well, but it is a bittersweet moment for all of us. And I know it has been also a very tough week for the Hahn family, we're very blessed to have many members of the Hahn family, but let me particularly point out Mayor Jim Hahn, now Judge Jim Hahn, James Hahn, who is here, always an honor and a privilege to have you in our chambers, and we wanted to give colleagues an opportunity to each say some words about the time that we have spent with Ms. Hahn, and how special it has been, the friendship, as well as the work that she has done. So during announcements, we thought it would be nice for everybody to be able to go around and to say some words. I'll begin with Mr. Labonge, but folks, just, you know, light up your speaker lights, and I'll say a few words at the end, we'll ask her brother and anybody else who'd like to add some good words, I know the entire CD-15 family is down here, which have been an incredible part of it, and we'd love to hear from Ms. Hahn as well at the end. But with that, Tom Labonge.
Janice, God bless you and your family, this council stood in adjournment of your wonderful mother, your wonderful mother who went straight up to heaven. And we started the week in those announcements of learning that news, and now we stand up for your ascension, ascension to the United States Congress, which is a great achievement. You've always been for people, absolutely been for people, and your father sat in that chair, and your uncle sat in that chair, and your brother sat on the second floor as a controller, and on the 18th floor as a city attorney, and as the third floor as the mayor, and your family's always been there. And I just wanted to say how wonderful it was for me to get to know you better, and you represented one of the great parts of Los Angeles, the Port of Los Angeles, San Pedro, coming from a big family, that's where we went for fun, we came down to San Pedro to Pier Point Landing, to Fisherman's Co-op, to all those places, and the Lake Great John Faro, used to love going down there, I'd seen all the Italians who were there in San Pedro, and you represented them well, you cared about all your district, the work you did in Watts, the challenges that you made, the standing up for youth who didn't get the opportunity that many of us got, to get the right direction instead of the wrong direction, and you always stood for what is right. And I don't know how many times that we were not on the same line, but I follow many things that you did because of how you believed in. And I think the great thing about Janice Hahn is she loved her job, and if you love your job and you love people, you could be a great public servant. You're an absolute great public servant, I could talk the rest of the day, but I won't. Please don't, says Jan Perry. Okay. But I love you, Janice Hahn, I'm so proud, you're going to be one of 535 members of Congress, I'm so proud you have the roots of a city, and a part of a city that's so important to America, whether it's the International Airport or the Port of Los Angeles, at all points in between, you're going to be a great contribution to the United States Senate. I love you, I love your family, I love your dad, and God bless your mom, who was so nice to me with every time I talked, God bless Janice Hahn.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you for your friendship with Janice over the years, Ms. Perry.
Thanks, Mr. President, Janice, it's, I know when we started out, we had five women here, and now we're down to two, now we're down to one, but it was a pleasure to be able to look across this horseshoe and look into the eyes of reason, and I know you will carry that to Washington DC and carry us and our interests in your heart as you deliberate. I told you the other night, I was proud of you, I was proud of you then, I'm proud of you now, you're a fighter, you're a straightforward person who has deep and committed beliefs, and that will serve us all very well, and I would imagine your mother was very proud of you. You're a wonderful family person, a great mother, and I guess that's your sister there next to your brother, so I don't know who that is, or those little children, but I see them every year on your holiday cards, so I guess they're your grandchildren, although you're far too young to have children that old, but good luck, thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Mr. Cardenas.
I've had the pleasure of sitting next to Janice Hahn for some time on this horseshoe, but even before then, I've been a big fan of the Hahn family, even before I got involved in politics. My family's a little bit more recent getting involved in politics than yours, but I just wanted to share a few words and thank you for your public service, your personal public service, and that you are a really good public servant. You and I have had the opportunity to discuss and talk about matters more on a personal basis before we vote and after we vote, and even when we don't agree sometimes, we've had some really good conversations, and I've learned a lot from you, Janice, and one of the things that I would like to say about you and your family is that you're very fortunate, that it's not easy being in the public eye and continuing to be seen as a family of integrity and a family that is actually so giving and has so many good qualities that we would want any one of our children or anybody we love and care about to exude, and you do that, and so does your brother and your father and your mother, and it's not easy to do that. Just for one person to be in the limelight, it's really hard, because you have so much consternation and so many things that are bantered about that aren't even true, but for you to be able to do that for so many decades and for you to carry it on into the future as well, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate it as a fellow Angelino and as a friend. And I'll end with a personal inside comment, you're all grown up now, Janice, congratulations on your election to Congress, and this is not a farewell per se, but it's just saying you're not going to be sitting with us here, but you're always going to be with me and those of us you've served with, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Janice, you know, you're right opposite me on the horseshoe, and I've always had the pleasure of these six years to look into your eyes, your face, and your expression as part of my maturing in this particular role as an elected official. One of the very first moments we were together as electeds was over at the Coliseum, and you took me up to a words that your father had said, and we talked about that, and then we were sitting here in the council, and I was in a tough decision-making, and you said, Bill, if you're ever going to err, err on the side of the people. And that stuck in my brain forever, because I love the people, and I know you do, I know your brother does, and your dad and mother do, and did, and so your commitment to people is extraordinary. And when you decided to run for the House, there was a lot of problems and different people's attitudes, but when I said that you'll take the tea party and the coffee party and you'll make a new drink, I really mean that. Janice, you're going into the worst dysfunctional federal government we've had in my lifetime. We have a debt ceiling that nobody knows what to do with, and they start messing around with Social Security and Medicare, which is insane, that they would even think about those entitlements. And I know when you go back there, you will be a national and international leader on absolutely every issue, because you'll listen, you'll look, you'll learn, and you're going to be fearless, because you love America and you love people so much. So I am just thrilled to know I have one member of that House of Representatives now, out of those 435, that's going to truly represent the people, my prayers will be with you, my support will always be with you, and America and the world is better off with you going to Washington. As others have said, it's our loss, but it's the nation and the world's gain. God bless you, and my prayers will stay with you strong, love you to death.
Thank you. Mr. Zine.
Thank you.
Keep it clean, Mr. Zine, keep it clean.
All those rumors, Janice, I remember when you walked to the bell in San Pedro on your election, and I remember Reissa Vornich walking in there the day that you took your oath of office at the inauguration at the bell, your constant comment about girl power, always mentioning girl power, and as Jan Perry said, it's down to one girl power for the city council now, but you've had that impact. The neighborhood council, I remember, we had a meeting down in your area, the first neighborhood council meeting that you hosted, I remember the one you had next to the ocean, there was another one that we had next to the ocean, and you brought snow to Watts, how many people can say they brought snow to Watts? You brought snow to Watts. New housing project's going to take place in Watts, your commitment to that community for all of the years, and you always, you know, we look back and forth, and I'll go like this, and then you've always muttered, "In your dreams, in your dreams," and all those rumors that have been floating for years, we're never going to confirm any of those, but I wish, look at, look at, your brother's squirming, your brother is now squirming.
I'm sorry, Mr. Zine, your time is up.
Judge Hahn is squirming. Don't squirm, Judge, it's all right, but I wish you well, it's, as Bill said, it's a challenging task, but you've made a commitment to the people of this city, your family's made a commitment to people back from the 40s, we mentioned that recently when we adjourned for your mom, but I wish you well in that endeavor, it's going to be exciting, it's going to be interesting, and now you have to get that winter coat back in Washington DC, so a whole new wardrobe, because I know you like to go shopping, but I wish you well. She does, she likes to go shopping, I wish you well, and you're, well, we got these rumors, we don't want to confirm anything, so Jimmy's still squirming, the judge is still squirming. But anyway, blessings to you in your new venture, new excitement, from the Charter Commission to City Council to Congress, up that ladder success, God bless you and wish you well in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Englander.
You know, maybe it was something I said, because before four meetings, and now you're leaving me? From the newest member, you know, I was cleaning out my office recently and moving all my things and going through a lot of personal belongings, and I came across a letter from you that was many, many years old, and it was in my former life that I had done a piece of mail for you, in fact, and you told me, and you wrote in that letter that your father hung that piece of mail that I did-
That's right.
-behind his hospital bed, and you wrote this in this letter, and then you wrote, PS, I hope we have the opportunity to work closer together one day. And so the last four meetings, I really thought about that with that letter. You didn't say for a brief period of time, but that meant so much to me that I kept that letter all this time, and because you've had such not only a special career, but you're a special person, and I think you've heard just from the colleagues that have worked with you so closely, and everybody knows it, that you care so much about people, and this is such a people business, that we need that in Washington, we need that so desperately to grow someone, one of our own, here in the city of Los Angeles, and send them off to represent us in Washington. We need that, because I think they've lost touch of that, and I think you're going to bring that sparkle, the one you have in your eye, to Washington and bring that back here as well. So I just want to say what an honor, and it's a privilege, that I've shared four meetings with you, and I look back on that letter, and I will hold on to that letter forever and remember that, and just say, God bless you, and good luck to you, I know you don't need it, but we'll always have a place for you here as well, and you'll have a place in my heart, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Parks.
Well, Janice, I mentioned to you before, I don't know of anyone that would take a job that you have to go 3,000 miles to do it, particularly since you just had to take a little short run from the harbor to City Hall, but I just wanted to tell you that you've really brought a lot of positives to this council, the ability that you always had your issues that you wanted to get through, and I'll never forget the one that you cost us a couple of million dollars on your one sidewalk. So we had to fix sidewalks for the whole city, because she had one sidewalk, but it's been fun, and as I'd mentioned to you earlier, you've gone through some transitions here, and it's got to be really tough that be here today and realize that this is the first major accomplishment in your life, that your mom's not here. And that's something that you have to think on and reflect on, in losing a parent, and now you've lost both of them, a little bit of you goes with them, and so it's, no matter what people say, you're never prepared to lose your parents, and so I want to say thank you, and I told Jan Perry I'd whisper this, I love you.
Mr. Kurhets.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I'm a longtime fan of Janice Hahn, and I worked in her, a little bit in her first congressional campaign, and I was disappointed at the time that she lost by a hair, but looking back, that was a great thing. It was a great thing for the city of Los Angeles and your constituents in the 15th District, and I think it was a great thing for you. I think you absolutely have the DNA of serving in local government. Your father, of course, was the, without a doubt, the greatest elected official ever to serve in local government in Los Angeles, and I'm sure further, and you have absolutely served in his tradition. In fact, I think more than anybody else, you make this look easy, and you get along with everybody, even though I think we can- And you get along with everybody, even though I think we can sometimes be a difficult council. And I think we will all miss you greatly, but we're all very excited that you get to take what you've done here and replicate it with 435 difficult people. We're confident you will work great with all of them and make a real difference. And they need it. Things are a complete mess right now. Hopefully you can dive in and make a difference right away. So we all miss you, but you were incredible to serve with. It was a surprise to me that we both wound up on this council and got to serve a couple of years together. So I wish you all the best and we'll watch you with pride at the federal level.
Thank you. Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Janice, we've known each other for many, many years, long before I was on this council or you were on this council for that matter. And it's just been a tremendous honor for me to be able to call you my colleague for these last 18 months. Mr. Parks mentioned that this was a big milestone for you and the first one at which your mom is not here to see it. And while that might be literally true, I think it's also safe to say that your mom is here with all of us today, especially with you. But your mom left a legacy that's fairly unmatched to Southern California, as I mentioned to you earlier, when you think of the work that she did in public service herself, the support that she gave as the shoulder to shoulder with the great Kenny Hahn, your father, to have children who would become our great mayor, James Hahn, council member Janice Hahn, and now Congresswoman Janice Hahn. That is a tremendous legacy that I think, you know, all of us could only aspire to. And on the subject of legacy, you've left your mark on this city in innumerable ways. The one that stands out especially to me, of course, is your deep commitment to community empowerment and the work that you did on the Charter Reform Commission and the work that you've done throughout in supporting our neighborhoods and supporting the voice of the people in government, I think will be a lasting legacy that this city will benefit from for a very, very long time. But even more important than any, you know, thing that you've accomplished, maybe on the policy level, I just have to say personally that we are all serving in one of the most difficult times to be in public service. And throughout all of the difficulties that we've had, throughout all of the difficult debates that we've had, throughout all of the challenges that we've had to overcome, I think you have always done this work with humor, with grace, with a positive outlook that is too often sorely missing in our public discourse today, not just here in Los Angeles, but throughout the country. And I'm so, while I'm going to really deeply miss that here and I hope that we'll all, you know, aspire to learn from your example and as we continue on without you try to maintain that positive outlook and positive course of our discourse, I know that our country will be the better for your being in Congress and helping to bring some of that outlook to our nation's capital as well. So congratulations. I'm looking forward to working with you in your new capacity.
Thank you. Mr. Alakon.
Janice, buddy, I'm going to miss you because you've become a fierce champion for the issues that so often we team up on to support and are challenging us during these economic times. I do want to say, you know, it's often said that to prepare for the future, you have to know your history. Well, the Hahn family is a family that does not have to read too much history and go deeply into history to know what foundations it stands on. I'm comforted in the fact that notwithstanding your mother's passing, that she joins with your father and your uncle and all the other Hahns to go with you to Washington. I know in your heart and in your mind and in doing so, you carry a tremendous legacy with you that I think is going to benefit Los Angeles. To think that we have Janice Hahn fighting for our harbor, I think, is a really good thing. I can't think anybody else would do it as you will. To think that you will fight to make more sense of our LAX and the controversies and difficulties that we've had and the challenges with that, to think that you will do all of that and always balance the issues of the environment and concerns that the community raised, I know that there will be no better champion for us. So as with the history of all your family members who have greatly impacted this city and have placed not only their family stamp on this city, you will carry on and represent Los Angeles and make us a better place. So you're going to Washington, but you're doing it for Los Angeles. And having said that, let me say that, you know, there's not too many families who recognize the tremendous power of diversity and welcome it. There were times when, you know, LA politicians would shun diversity and ignore those that had little voice. The Hahn family has always embraced it as a new challenge. How can we work with the diversity of Los Angeles to incorporate it into the history that we will write each and every day? So I can think of no other family that does that. So this is, you're embarking on a new mission for the Hahn family. And in doing so, you carry the diversity of Los Angeles and the great history of your family with you. And so you're well-prepared. You're well-prepared. I think Washington, D.C. is going to get quite a defibrillation with Ms. Hahn in their presence. So good luck, God bless. All of us will miss you in our own personal ways. Me, because you're a champion for working people, the underserved and regular folks in our city. And you're willing to say things that others don't want to say for fear of being embarrassed or hitting the newspapers. You just say what needs to be said. So keep on doing it in Washington and we're all going to be better for it. God bless, continued health, and we wish you well. And we'll stop by to visit you every once in a while and lobby you for other things for Los Angeles. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. And let me stand, Janice, out of love and respect for you and for your mother as well. We were talking a little earlier this morning, 64 years ago, the Hahn stepped on the stage, public stage here of Los Angeles. It's been 64 years that at the city and county level, there's been a Hahn in office until tomorrow or Tuesday. And when your mother stepped on the stage back then, it was a recognition that all of us, we lost a great public servant, not just when your father left us, but when your mother did. But as Tom said, I know she's in heaven, I know she loves both you and your brother so much and gave so much to Los Angeles. And I want to start by remembering her. So 10 years ago and 15 days ago, you became a councilwoman. And the class of folks that came together, one or two are gone already, but the ones that are left are me, you, Ed, Dennis, and Jan. And you know, very quickly you start saying, "Oh, this is like a family." And it really is a good metaphor because families you don't choose, families you're just presented with. And families, sometimes you get along with some people and sometimes with others, but there's an intimacy. There's a love and a respect that grows. And I loved sitting next to you our first year together, I think it was about a year, and turning to each other to try to figure out this incredibly complicated place. And, you know, what I loved about Janice is almost on any issue, you would, I'd say, "Oh, this is a waste issue." Well, I used to work for a waste contractor, investment banking. Well, I used to work for an investment banker, charter reform. I used to be a charter reform commissioner. I can't think of anybody who is as well-prepared and had as many professional experiences before getting here as you have. And the city of Los Angeles has really benefited from it. Your legislative record has been incredible, from the living wage that today people have. Talk about a tough fight to make sure that hotel workers have dignity and respect, a port cleanup that kept the engine going while making sure that the air, not just for your residents, but for this entire Southern California basin, even beyond the reach of the city of Los Angeles, is better by opening up at nighttime with your brother the trucks that could go so that traffic would be reduced. The new parks, Lake Machado, the new parks and the old parks you cleaned up, the beach at the harbor when we wrote pro po, making sure that CD 15 was included in there. The airport that is finally on the move. I mean, after decades of talking about it, your brother laid down the foundation, you saw it through the goalposts and as the chair of our TCT committee, a convention center poised to enter its next phase. I mean, these are huge things that if you get to do one in your lifetime, you're lucky, let alone five or 10 of them. I remember sitting on the Budget Committee together and as an aside, I always loved the motions. I think Mr. Weisar's been inspired by you. That's great that we're talking about this, but can I see the impact on CD 15 of every single thing that we're ever talking about? We get a little bit more money from each one of these departments. You really fought for your area. But more importantly, I think you and I were the first ones to, together, and I remember a conversation in your brother's office where he said it too, and it was something that he wanted to do, but ultimately I think that we were able to see through was making sure that we had full cost recovery for our garbage collection so that we could hire the police officers that today, the foundation of the public safety, the safest city in 50 years, which is really a dual legacy of you and your brother and everybody who's been around here. That was Janice Hahn who first talked about it with me, I think, in Budget Committee and said, "We need to do this." Your focus on young people, when a lot of people said, "Let's not care about gang members" in this dirty, dirty election where people tried to hang that on you when you had the courage to not give up on people, even though we know people will continue to make mistakes and that inherently somebody who has been arrested has obviously made mistakes, but if we give up on them, we give up on our city. You, Janice Hahn, Measure A, the courage to do that and coming so close. And when we needed you on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, you were the person who said, "What about homeownership at the very low income level and include Habitat for Humanity?" But it's some of the personal stories that I'll remember most. One, when, after our first year, we were in Asia traveling together with your brother and I remember just the grace with which you had, whether it was talking to a crane manufacturer and almost getting a crane named after you, but standing up for the city. Or when your brother was stuck in a very long conversation at the Beijing Airport and we could just kind of look at each other and smile as he suffered away with a bureaucrat that seemed to have a very fascinating conversation with Jim. Doing Flavors of L.A., the show that we did, you were the first person because I knew you'd be the most fun to go and see different restaurants in your district. That really gave me a chance to see from Watts and San Pedro, the life of the neighborhoods that you represented. You should be an animal agent. I mean, what you did with Reggie to make him a star was second to none. I mean, Reggie is a superstar today because of Janice Hahn. And you never miss an opportunity to make sure that Reggie got his time on TV. I also think that, you know, in some ways, the most dramatic moment I'll remember is your primary election night. I've been to a lot of election nights and I've been to a lot of victory parties and I don't think there will ever be one that will surpass the sheer drama and joy of that night when we went from sweat, 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 it's going to be a tough uphill thing, to in a matter of seconds, when most people had gone home, when most people had done their stories, in a moment I think we realized Janice Hahn was going to be a Congresswoman. So let me end on this. One other memory I have is an incredible presentation you made at the National League of Cities about the Port of L.A. And you called it "America's Port." It was a beautiful way of speaking about our port because we can trace the jobs in America's port to every single congressional district in this country. And just as you named San Pedro America's Port, you're going to be America's Congresswoman. You're going to be a Congresswoman for all of us and you're going to do an incredible job, a fighter for justice, a beautiful vision of what America should be. Congresswoman Janice Hahn. And with that, I'd like to ask Jim Hahn, wherever you want. Yeah, from the podium? I'd like to ask our great former mayor, Jim Hahn, to say a few words to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was invited by my beautiful bride, Michelle, to come down here today. You know, we ought to be here for Janice's last day in city council. I'm glad that you said that, Michelle. So we're here with your daughter, Katie, and Ken and Brooklyn and Josiah and John and the family is here because, as you pointed out, Eric, 64 years ago, Kenny took his seat around this horseshoe. And for 64 continuous years, some member of our family has been serving here in local government in Los Angeles. And you're ending that, Janice, by going off to Washington. But you know, what she said about, she says, "You know, I want to still be a councilwoman as a Congress member because I want the people in my district to know that I'm still going to be as easy to reach as I've always been and that I'm going to care about their individual issues." That's the way we were raised. We were so lucky that Kenny and Ramona were our parents. My mom never liked the spotlight, but she made sure that all of us were ready to look good once we got in that spotlight. And obviously, we miss her very much this week, but I'm so proud of you, Janice, going on to Washington, D.C. When we used to visit our dad when we were little across the street at the old Hall of Records, he would often bring us over here to the city council chambers where Uncle Gordon was on the city council. And we always thought this was a much more impressive meeting room than the little old board of supervisors meeting room in the Hall of Records. And I think, you know, that was probably what inspired us to want to come and work here and work for the people. Janice has always been, just like our dad, a real fighter. And I know she's going to be a fighter for us in Washington, Janice. And as long as you remember that advice you give everybody else, you know, if you're going to err, err on the side of the people, I think you're going to do great. And I'm so proud of my sister, Janice, and thank you all for all your great words today.
Thank you very much. Mayor Jim Hahn. With that, Janice, your last speech as a councilwoman on the floor.
Yeah, two minutes. I'm going to make a motion for two minutes. Well, thank you, colleagues. This is a very bittersweet moment for me, partly because I will be leaving those of you who I have been serving with for, some of you have been here for 10 years with me, but certainly because of the events of the week and losing my dear, sweet mother. It's been a very, very difficult week. It's wonderful to have my family here today, my brother Jim, his wife, Michelle, my daughter Katie, and her husband, John, and my three beautiful grandchildren, McKenna, Brooklyn, and Josiah. You've watched them grow up on my holiday cards every single year. My very first one I had, McKenna was just a little baby and you've watched them every year grow up on those cards. And I want to just thank my family. Certainly, those of us who are in public service know that it is the love and support of our families that actually allow us to do the jobs that we do every single day. And I'm very thrilled to have my staff here today. You know, you might all dispute it, but I think I have the best staff in the city council offices, bar none. And those of us also in this job know that it is our staff that are really the soldiers out there, day in and day out. They are on the front lines every single day. Every time that phone rings, they don't ever know who's going to be on the other end and what issue will be having to be dealt with. And they don't know who's going to walk in the office. Sometimes they're happy, sometimes they're angry. But they're public servants too. Everybody that works on our council staffs is first and foremost a public servant. They serve the public every day. So my hat is off to my council staff. You guys have been absolutely terrific and really make me look good out there in the public for the hard work that you do day in and day out. You know, this has been an incredible 10 years and I think, Paul, you said it, things happen for a reason and I do believe that. And while I think I would have made a good Congress member in 1998 when I ran for it, it was not meant to be. And when I look back on my life, I think it was the 10 years on the city council that was really able to shape me and allow me to sort of develop my style of governing and my style of leadership. And I've been interviewed today by different media outlets that want to know what kind of a Congress member am I going to be? What's my style going to be? And I look at what we all do every day here and I look back and some of the biggest issues and some of the most significant initiatives and some of the most complex solutions to complex problems came because I brought everybody in and sat them around my conference table, either, you know, on the fourth floor or down in San Pedro. And there were many times around my table I had members of the chambers of commerce, I had labor and unions, I had environmental groups, and I had community activists all at the same table. And the ultimate solution was better than if any of us had tried to craft that on our own. And I believe that will carry with me when I go to Congress. I believe there is good in everyone. I believe... I believe you have to find something that you can believe in, that's the common ground and the common initiative. And that is what our dad taught us, is that you can find a way to solve problems. And you talked about the port. When I was elected in 2001, there was a 100-year war going on with the people who lived in San Pedro and Wilmington and the Port of Los Angeles. And I said, I think we can have both. I think we can have good jobs, and I think we can have clean air. I don't think we have to make that debate go on and on, and we've proved that. First, under my brother, who really began saying that we had to begin to clean up that port, and certainly under our current mayor, Antonio Villagoso, who continued that effort. And now we have this historic Clean Air Action Plan, where we have clean trucks, we have cleaner ships, we have equipment that moves that cargo around that is clean, and we do have cleaner air and we have good jobs. And that is going to be, again, the way I govern. And I will tell you, when I'm looking at my brother here, I think some of my, the four greatest years for me was when my brother was mayor. You can't imagine what a thrill that is to really have your older brother be the mayor of Los Angeles while you're sitting on the city council. We agreed most of the time, very rarely did we disagree, but that was, when I look back, and people wondered how that was going to work, right? How's that going to work? Your brother's the mayor. But those were my best years and my fondest memories of working in the city was knowing that my brother was the mayor while I was a city councilwoman. I'll look back on that forever as being, what a great opportunity, what a great partnership. Really loved that a lot. So thank you, colleagues. Thank you for sticking with me when I had issues that really mattered to me, whether it was the living wage or providing health care for the 5,000 workers at the airport. When we got some opposition, many times you all stood with me and you voted the way I wanted you to do, and I really appreciated that. I love each and every one of you dearly. You're all wonderful public servants. I can't imagine, no matter where I go, that I will ever serve with people who are as dedicated as you and who are as generous as you are and who really are passionate every single day about serving the people that we all love, which are the residents of this great, great city, Los Angeles. I will not forget you. I hope you don't forget me. And let's always rededicate ourselves every single day to serving the public. They depend on us. They want us to do that right thing, and let's all rise to that occasion every single time. Thank you very much.
I forgot to say you'll send money.
Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Ms. Han, go ahead.
Yeah, I did want to give a shout out. This I did forget. I wanted to give a shout out to the wonderful city employees that we have working here in the city of Los Angeles. I think they are the best in the country.
Mr. Barnes.
Special for everybody here, on behalf of the city council, we want you to have this great name plate. All of us here, take that to Congress. That's from all of us.
Thank you. You beat me to it, Mr. Labons. You beat me to it, Mr. Labons.
Can we take a photo?
Sure. Are there any adjourning motions today? Yeah, Mr. Corrigan?
We may still need that sign, because there's some younger Hahn's here that I expect will be here soon.
They're a little bit out of the jurisdiction, but we're happy to, you know, move them in anytime they want. Mr. Corretts?
Yeah, something much more mundane after our wonderful recognition of Councilmember Han. Of course, this weekend is going to be Carmageddon, and we've been asking people to bicycle and walk and take public transportation, stay away from the 405 and not use their cars. The one thing we haven't talked about, which I'm receiving a lot of constituent calls about, is helicopters by the dozens buzzing everyone's homes around the 405. And I recognize that we need to have good coverage and that that's important. At the same time, we ask that they be respectful and sensitive to the residents in the area and try to keep helicopter coverage within reasonable limits during Carmageddon weekend.
Thank you very much. Are there any other announcements?
Good luck with that.
At the Coinga Pass with Mike Garcetti, I'm the commander of the Coinga Pass. We'll handle all issues through the pass in what I call Carmen Miranda-Geddon, to give a little love to it, because we're going to make it through this weekend well. There will be challenges, but we're going to make it through well. We'll think positive as we result. And it's great to see as president of the city council, sitting in that very special seat, Ms. Han.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements?
The question is that we move to take, first, a council group shot, and, second, your staff take a group shot at the appropriate time. Is there a second?
Thank you. Mr. Sein.
President Han, just to remind the folks that the 40th anniversary of the LA Police Family Fun Day and Celebrity Golf Tournament will be this Saturday, July 16, 8:30 registration begins, and is going to be in Rancho Palos Verdes at the Trump National Golf Club, One Ocean Trails Drive in Palos Verdes. Those from the Valley and Santa Clara, I don't know how you're going to get there with the 405 closed. Nevertheless, it's the 40th LA Police Family Fun Day and Celebrity Golf Tournament. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perry.
While the city is enduring the closure of the 405 this weekend, I would suggest, for those of you who are able, you should come to Little Tokyo, starting tonight, for the Little Tokyo Design Week at the Japanese-American Community and Cultural Center. People were out in force last night, and it was a great, great time. We also have the Pershing Square Concerts, starting Saturday night, featuring a flock of seagulls and, of course, grand performances. So you can come downtown, get a hotel room, stay here, and have a great time the whole weekend.
Are there any other members? Oh, Mr. Alacon.
I'd like to invite everybody to a community pet fair tomorrow, Saturday, July 16, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Tobias Park, just north of Van Nuys and Nordoff, at 9122 Tobias Avenue in Panera City. It'll be a free event. The pet fair will have all these services available, span neuter services, low-cost pet vaccines, pet adoptions, microchipping for $15, raffles, and animal education information. Bring your pets.
Any other members? Mr. Rosendahl.
Madam President, it's good to call you Madam President. Last time, we're going to be calling you in Oakwood. We're going to have a barbecue on Saturday.
You don't know if that's the last time you're going to be calling me Madam President.
You're going to be president in Washington. You watch what you're going back there for. Look forward to you becoming Speaker of that House, too, by the way. Anyhow, we have an Oakwood barbecue on Saturday, and my folks are staying home and barbecuing. And so if you're in Oakwood, come on over for that barbecue. The fire department does the cooking. Everybody loves the ribs they make and the chicken and everything else. And have a great weekend about the Carmageddon. There's been more organization and discussion, and I want to thank the media for putting a word out so much, and if anybody's going on Sepulveda, they're a fool unless, you know, something else happens in their mind. I don't understand. But keep it clear, keep yourself home, and I want to thank all the hospitals that have worked out ways to keep their workers there, that need to be there for critical needs, and everyone for working together to make that weekend less of an issue than what we think it might become.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Mr. Parks.
Yeah, I have 12. No, I just have two. I'd just like to invite the public to the Cherrywood-Lamert Park Annual Block Club and Barbecue. That's going to be a transfiguration church on Saturday, 12 to 3:00 p.m. And this is an appropriate request. Jan Han is leaving, and she's been a very active and regular meeting at SCAG. And I just want to remind everyone that we have 15 votes at SCAG. Only two to three of us show up each time. People are making decisions about our airports, they're making decisions about our housing, and they're making decisions about our transportation plans. We just gave everybody a copy of the upcoming schedule and the time of the meetings. Everyone by your position is a member of the regional council, and once you're on the regional council, you certainly can get assigned to committees. But I'd like to make sure everybody knows that we're losing a great deal of our influence on a three-county committee because of our lack of presence.
Thank you. Mr. Sein, didn't you already speak?
To add to what Mr. Parks has said, Mr. Smith used to attend, you used to attend?
I attended.
Ms. Han attended, Mr. Parks, and I attend. I don't think the other colleagues may or not aware of it, but it's important because there's issues that affect the city of Los Angeles from SCAG. It's a $40 million operation, and it's important that we have representation, so we'd encourage all of our colleagues to attend. Mr. Parks has passed out a schedule for 2011. Thank you.
Very cool. Anybody else who has announcements? Members, are there any adjourning motions? Okay, please rise. Everybody in the audience, please rise for our adjourning motions. Mr. Sein.
Thank you, Madam President. The adjourning motions for an officer from Valley Traffic Division who passed away, Officer Charles Clinton Wright, passed away July 10. Born November 11, 1945, in San Pedro, California, appointed to Los Angeles Police Department November 30, 1970. On September 17, 1997, Officer Wright was one of six officers honored at the 38th Medal of Valor Awards Luncheon. Circumstances, from September 22, 1995, two years earlier, Officer Wright went in pursuit of three armed gunmen who had just committed a vicious takeover robbery of a local business on Sepulveda and Sherman Way. Officer Wright pursued the suspects, who ran through nearby businesses, shooting indiscriminately at innocent bystanders. There was a running gun battle with this motorcycle officer. Officer Charlie Wright engaged the suspects in gunfire, ultimately resulted in their capture and prevented injuries to many innocent victims along Sepulveda and Sherman Way, a major corridor in the South Florida Valley. For that action, he received the Medal of Valor. He retired September 8, 1998, last assigned to the division I was assigned, Valley Traffic Division. Passed away in Acton, California, from health complications. Services are scheduled for Saturday, July 23, St. Stevens of the Valley Lutheran Church in Palmdale. Survived by his wife, Jean, daughters Nancy Wilson, Michelle, son, police officer from Van Nuys, his son, Charles Kevin Wright. May he rest in peace. Charlie Clinton Wright.
Thank you. Are there any other adjourning motions? Seeing none. This concludes the meeting of this very fine city council, July 15, 2011. Please call the roll.